Michelle Lempiades.
Present.
Representing Educational District Four, Ms. Jennifer McDonald.
Here.
Representing Educational District Five, Ms. Erica Mitchell. Representing Educational District Six and Board Chair, Ms. Ishay Collins.
Present.
Representing Educational District at Large Seat Seven, Ms. Tamara Jones.
Present.
Representing Educational District at Large Seat Eight, Ms. Cynthia Briscoe Brown.
She is present.
Representing Educational District at Large Seat Nine, Mr. Jason Estaves.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gaither. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our June sixth, oh wow, June sixth board meeting.
So moved.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Jennifer McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, properly seconded by Tamara Jones. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the August eighth board meeting agenda?
So moved.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Board Member Jason Estaves, seconded by Jennifer McDonald. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thanks, if any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Heron, would you please bring today's work session items?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Board Chairwoman, Board Vice Chairman, and our Board Members at Large, present. We have four presentations today. First, we will hear a Board Member requested presentation on safety and security from our very own Chief Ronald Appel. Following Chief Appel, Travis Norvell, Chief Strategy Officer, and Dan Drake, Executive Director of Facilities, will provide the Facilities Master Planning update. For our third presentation, Lisa Bracken, our Chief Financial Officer, will provide the Strategic Plan Update, which includes the monthly financial update regarding mileage process, quarterly student activity reports, and budget adjustments. And then, following Ms. Bracken's presentation, we will have our first Student Outcomes Focused Governance Progress Monitoring Report around Goal One, which is literacy proficiency. This presentation and discussion will be led by Dr. Smith, our Chief Performance Officer, our Board Chairwoman, Board Chairman Collins, and myself as Superintendent. This will not have a full visual presentation, as a reminder, for our first engagement, this is a discussion. Chief Appel, we are ready, sir, for your Board Member requested presentation on safety and security.
Thank you very much, Dr. Heron. Greetings, Dr. Heron.
Greetings.
Thank you for the opportunity. Hope I was talking loud enough. The reason for this presentation is to provide an overview of the Office of Safety and Security, its role in keeping students and staff safe, and plans for the 2022-2023 school year. During this presentation, we're going to talk about the focus of the Office of Safety and Security. We're going to talk about current staffing, and I'll talk about future plans. Hopefully, at the end of this presentation, you'll have a better understanding about the readiness to provide a safe and secure teaching environment and learning environment for Atlanta Public Schools. Thinking about our focus, at the end of the day, our primary focus is to provide a safe and secure learning environment for our students, staff, and Atlanta Public Schools' parents, and anyone who enters Atlanta Public Schools. There are certain levers involved in order to create and maintain a secure environment in schools. Those levers include improving school safety and security, also reducing school-based crime, and building positive relationship within law enforcement and students, which is basically the foundation of our department, is to create and develop relationships with our students. That helps us to provide a more safer and secure environment for our students. If we can create an environment where they're comfortable coming to us, sharing with us, providing us information, we can act on those things, get ahead of problems a lot quicker, which is one of the reasons why we're doing what we do. There are challenges when it comes to safety and security. There are increased incidents of behavior problems in our schools, increased weapons that are confiscated, and of course, all of the things that we hear nationwide, all the challenges that we hear from other departments, other school districts throughout the country. Keep in mind that there's no one single solution to this problem. We look at this approach as a layered approach to dealing with safety and security. So it's not just one thing. So we think about human capital investment. What are we doing with human resources, with people? What can we do to deal with some of the challenges that we have? We're looking at changing the behavior of occupants in our buildings, and what can we do to train them and teach them to do things differently in a way to make sure that they're doing things to keep themselves safe and aware of some of the issues that they may come across. We're looking at things like building infrastructure modifications and additions. So we're looking at what can we do in these buildings, what can we do in the structures that we have currently to make our students safer, make our teachers safer, so that they're comfortable in the environment that they're in. We're looking at safety and security technology. We're always reviewing things like that. As a matter of fact, we get calls day in and day out from various organizations that want to share new technology with us. But we also reach out to our partners and talk to them about some of the things that they're seeing. So we're doing information sharing with that also. We have an awareness and preparedness technology. We look at that also. What can we do to help people be prepared, help people stay more aware in their environment, and also internal and external partners and relationships. So we look at all of those things, we put them all together, and hopefully, those layers will help us either deter, prevent, and help us respond to any issues that we may have or come across. The Office of Safety and Security consists of a Senior Director of Security, which is Ralph Fales. I did want to introduce him, if you can stand, if you don't mind standing. Ralph Fales, and I have a few more partners, a few more officers in the classroom, a few more officers in the boardroom that I'd like to introduce, members of the team that's very significant. I'll start in the back. Lieutenant Hill, he's in charge of all of our crossing guards, and also security. Dispatch Manager Walter Warner, now, he's in charge of our call center. We get thousands of calls each year, and they handle those very well. So he's responsible for that, making sure that that goes off very well. Sergeant Andre Pam, if you'll raise your hand. He's over Maynard Jackson, North Atlanta, and which cluster? Maynard Jackson, North Atlanta. He's got three clusters. He's responsible for those three. Each of our sergeants are Sergeant Robinson, Tamaya Robinson, she's in charge of the charter partner, all right? Investigator Bird, if you ever need a singer, she can do that for you. Investigator Bynum, and also Investigator Lomax. Did I miss anybody? I did ask them all if they would come by, but of course, we're working, they're busy. If they were not busy, I asked if they would come by, but since they are, you know, we got who we could. Without going into details over there, some of the things I think that's important about this particular section, we have 114 full-time employees. We have 74 hourly employees, and all of us work together to make this district as safe as we can. It is a lift, it's something that we always work on every day. We constantly go back and review what we're doing each day to make sure that we are providing the best service possible. When we think about our future, what are we doing for this school year? One of the things that we're looking at, and one of the things that we recognized first, one of the things we recognized was in intake. When students are coming to school, we have to screen these students, especially middle and high school students. We have to screen them. It's been a challenge for some schools. The number, the volume has been very challenging. So we had to look at new technology that will allow us to screen students a lot more efficiently, a lot faster, so we're not spending time trying to screen students. The systems that we're looking at are not much different than what you see in the Mercedes-Benz and also at Lenox Square Mall. So you'll see those devices there, but the same type of devices we're trying to deploy here in Atlanta Public Schools. Again, to help us get students screened is less invasive. Our current method of screening involves the students walking through metal detectors, they have a bag, they have to stop someone, look inside the bag, and go through everything inside the bag. But with the new system that we're looking at, it's less likely that they will have to do that. So there are some instances where students' bags will have to be checked, but in a lot of instances, they just walk right through with no problem. We're also looking at, we're going to discuss, and I want to be careful about this, because I know this has been a touchy topic, we're going to talk about clear and mesh bags, all right? There's going to be a discussion about that. While some schools independently have made a decision to go with that, I approve of it. I don't have a problem with that, but I do understand that there needs to be a discussion about this, and we will have discussions about clear bags as a district mandate. So that's one of the things that we're looking at. Talked to several other school districts who are doing something similar, and heard a lot of good things about the idea behind that. One of the things that we addressed in about three years ago, the governor gave each school $30,000. I think y'all may remember that. But in that $30,000, one of the things that we did was we targeted ways to make sure that we know that our doors are propped open. So when the doors are propped open, and you may have been to some schools, you open up a door and it makes a loud buzzing sound. Well, that hopefully will condition people not to open those doors or leave them propped open. Think about Uvalde, Texas, the situation there, where the door was propped open. We don't want doors propped open. If we can keep our perimeter doors secured and force people to come into one entrance versus multiple entrances, that helps us in a big way also. So that's one of the things that we invested in. We're looking at installing security vestibles in all schools. A number of our schools already have them, but these security vestibles will help schools keep people out who they don't want inside their buildings. So you basically walk up, in some schools, you may have already seen this, you walk into the building, you don't go directly into the building itself. It forces you into the main office. That gives the office an opportunity to screen people to come in and out of their buildings. And the whole idea behind that, again, is to keep out people we don't want in our building. So one of the things we're looking at through SPOSS is security vestibles. We're working on a priority list for that, but hopefully, by the time this SPOSS session is over, we'll have all of those installed in all of our schools in the district. When we think about personnel, we're going to bring on 11 additional SROs, and we're also going to bring on two additional AROs. Now, talk about the AROs, we've already filled those positions, so now we only have 11 SRO positions that are vacant. We have quite a few people in the process. We do a very strict screening process. We don't bring on anyone, just anybody. We really look at a lot of things to make sure that they are good fit for our schools, make sure they're a good fit to deal with students. Because if they're not, we're not going to, we're not going to be, we're not going to bring them on board. Every once in a while, we get people who are good fit, but they come in, they realize this is not what they want to do, and we're okay with that, too, because we want people here who want to be here. So at the end of the day. We're also looking at a gang intelligence officer. We're working through the process with that now, but we recognize some of the challenges that we have in the city of Atlanta, and also, there are gangs in Atlanta, there are gangs in our schools. Are they operating as gangs? We don't see it as much, but we know that there are kids who are attracted to that. So we're trying to do things to try to deter that. One of the things that I didn't mention that not listening to the presentation is a great training program. We have a gang resistance education and training. We have two officers who are trained to deliver that training. We did some of it last year, we did some of it the year before. During the pandemic, it was a bit challenging because it wasn't face-to-face, but we're trying to increase our number of officers who are trained to deliver this particular program to help deter gangs, help deter kids from getting into gangs. Again, talking about our future, when we think about the capacity to provide a safe and secure learning environment, we train our officers in active shooter response. It's something that we don't ever want, we never want to do it, but we train our officers in it. We actually put them through scenarios and put them in situations where it's as close to being, and I just have to share this, close to being in a gunfight as possible without being in one. I know a large, a big question, a lot of people ask, what are your officers are going to do if there's an active shooter? Well, I train them, we train them to go and stop the threat. At the end of the day, stop the threat. Don't pause, don't wait, get in, go and take care of business. So we really focus on the training for our officers every year. We've expanded that to work with Atlanta Police Department and Atlanta Fire Department. We've actually done some joint trainings over the summer. We hope to expand on that to get more offices involved, so that if we have to come together, and I hope that we never do, that we can work cohesively and be able to solve problems very quickly. The schools are required to do active shooter drills twice a year. Some schools may do it more than that, but twice a year, they're required to do that. They're also required to report that. Now, keep in mind, we might, I don't want to just focus on active shooter because we have several hazards that we have to deal with. So we're focusing on all hazards. We're doing all types of drills to include fire drills, tornado drills, lockdown drills, all sorts of hazards. So we're dealing with not just active shooter, but various different hazards. So I don't want anyone to think that we're just focusing on active shooter. We're focusing on everything that we can. We added a course for teachers, for every staff member, actually, not just teachers, in my PLC for responding to active shooters. A few years ago, if you remember, we did what we call Trace, Teacher's Response to Active Shooting Events. Some schools want us to do it face-to-face, we'll do that for them, but we do have this in my PLC, and all teachers are asked to take this, all, every staff member is asked to take this particular class. Some of you may have had an opportunity to take that, but take this particular class, to help them, to give them some strategies to deal with any active shooters event, active shooter events if they happen to be involved in one. We have several systems in place. A few years ago, we had a parent from Springdale Park Elementary ask us to take a look at Sandy Hook Promise. We did, we liked it, we implemented it, and it is being deployed right now, today. We've had a lot of success from this particular program. The Secret Service did a study a few years ago, and in that study, they said in active shooting events, almost 84% of the time, someone knew about it. And that spoke volumes to us. That said a lot. It said that we needed to have something in place to give students, staff, anyone, an opportunity to share with us anonymously, and that's what this does for us. So the Say Something Anonymous reporting system has been very helpful. It was even more helpful, especially during the pandemic. We got a lot of information about, you know, students who were having mental health issues. I mean, we dealt with quite a bit as a result of it. So Say Something Anonymous reporting system was one of the systems that we have in place. We're upgrading our security systems to include radios, vehicles, cameras, and these things are being accomplished through SPOSS. We're looking at, we're making sure we deploy our school and central office visitor management systems. These systems were installed a couple of years ago. Of course, it helps us to identify potential threats from the outside, especially with visitors, especially sex offenders, for example. That's one of the things that this particular system will screen for. So a person comes into a building, they provide the identification, it does a search of a database of sex offenders, lets us know if this person is a sex offender or not, or danger to our students, and we deny access to that person. So that's one of the things that we're doing also. We also are working with Atlanta Police Department with their Video Integration Center. We're giving them access to all of our cameras, and in turn, they're giving us access to a large portion of their cameras, especially those in and around some of our schools. So we think about collaboration with other departments, and I'll talk a little bit about collaboration. These are some of the things that we're doing. We're working with other agencies to help each other be successful in keeping our students safe and secure. We think about collaboration and partnerships. We meet weekly with Atlanta Police Department. Two separate meetings. One is a Field Operations Division meeting with all of the zone commanders. I meet with them, also with Major Adams, if I'm not able to make it. And then, the other one is a Cobra meeting, which they talk about the crime statistics in Atlanta. And all of our sergeants, they take turns attending these meetings. So we have a representative at both of these meetings, especially in case, especially when situations when Atlanta Police has questions about what we're doing, what we can do to support them, and vice versa. So we are meeting all the time, we're also talking all the time. I was on the phone this last night and this morning with Atlanta Police, talking about incidents that we've been dealing with over the weekend. So we're constantly having conversations with them. It's not just these meetings, it is also telephone calls every, almost every other day, when we're speaking with Atlanta Police. I have to also talk about our partners, Fulton County Sheriff's Office. They've been very helpful in a lot of instances, especially with their explosive K9s. We have bomb threats in some schools, we can call on them, they can come out and help us out in very short notice. I know some people may ask, well, why don't you call Atlanta Police? We try not to overburden them with requests. That's why we reach out to our partners. We have multiple partners to reach out to. Fulton County Sheriff's Department has been a very significant partner, too. They also, the sheriff also deputized several of our officers, which gives us the ability to go beyond our boundaries to provide services for our students. We also hold periodic meetings with several K through 12 safety and security officials. I talk to the chief of police from every metro school police system once or twice a month. We talk all the time. There's always a conversation about, when anything, something happens, we're having conversations about what's going on, what we're doing, giving advice, sharing information. So we're doing that with groups like the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police, the International Association of Chiefs of Police. So we're reaching out to our partners and having these discussions all the time. The Fulton County District Attorney, we met with the District Attorney a few months ago, and we had conversations about gangs. And it's been one of the, one of the most, one of the more concerning topics that we've been dealing with in Atlanta. And she is very dedicated and serious about eradicating gangs. We met with her, we talked about some things that we can do to help curb some of the interest in gangs. We talked about some things that we could do to help identify gangs and things of that nature, and we created a partnership with the District Attorney, and through that partnership, we also strengthened our relationship with Atlanta Police, because now we're having even more conversations about the things that we're seeing, the things that we're dealing with, and vice versa. We're participating in the 90 My County Human Trafficking Task Force. This is a task force that Erica Mitchell, Board Member Mitchell, is also a member of. We are looking at ways to help children who are maybe trafficked. We're looking at training for our officers, training for teachers and staff. This particular task force, we've been participating in it, and we will continue to participate in this particular task force in the days going forward. We meet with juvenile court once a quarter, and in these meetings, we talk about everything related to juveniles, whether it is, are we talking about truancy, are we talking about juvenile delinquency? We're having those conversations. They're very frank conversations, I must tell you. The Student Services has a representative who is also in these meetings, but we also, we talk a lot about ways to just break this pipeline of prison, really and very intentional about what we do and how we go about dealing with our juveniles in the city. So we do that once a month also. So among several other things that we do, that's part of the collaboration and partnerships that we have. When we think about relationships, also think about the National Association of School Resource Officers. When this department was started, all of our officers were certified as SROs through this organization. Now, a spinoff of this organization in the state of Georgia is GASRO. It's a Georgia Alliance of School Resource Officers and Educators. And this organization, I'm also a board member of, is dedicated to making sure that schools throughout the state of Georgia have a group of officers, a group of people to come to and talk to about some of the challenges that they may have dealing with safety and security in their districts. The foundation of what we do is the triad method. The triad method, when you look at a, think about a triangle, and you can see that on the, I'm sorry, move the slide forward, is a triad method. And in this particular method, in this triad method, think about three things. Law enforcement, we do that every day. That's one thing that we know, we learn, we sleep and eat it. We know that. But the two things that are most important, and the two things we do more than anything, is educating and counseling our students. We spend less time as a law enforcement officer, and more times counseling and educating our students. Building relationships, we were very intentional, and are, still are very intentional about what we do with our officers when they come in. We have to reprogram them, and I have to be, you know, just want to share with you some things that I experienced. I was a SWAT team commander before I came over, and I looked forward to dealing with bad guys. I looked at bad guys as nails, and I was a hammer, right? That was my mentality. But over the years, I realized, in dealing with some of the kids I had to deal with, and some of the opportunities I've had to interact with kids, I realized that's not the mentality that they need. They don't need that mentality. So as we bring officers into our department, and when we started off from day one, we said, we got to program them. We have to change the way that they think. They have to make a switch from being a warrior to being, you know, a caretaker instead of a warrior, right? So when I was in academy and teaching in academy, I was always teaching officers how to survive, how to be that warrior, but now we have to make a change and do something different. So we program our officers. We give them social emotional learning, positive behavior intervention, crisis intervention team to help them understand disorders, and so that when they're dealing with someone who displaying certain habits or actions that they know and understand, this is probably a disorder, I need to deal with them a little bit differently. We train our officers in mental health first aid, so that they can understand some of the things that they can do immediately to help kids who are in crisis. Just a lot of programming that we give to our officers to help them deal with kids, help them interact with our children in a way that's a lot more appropriate than a custodial conversation. So we're dealing with them in a way that's going to help them than to hurt them. We're focusing on updating and integrated safety and security technology. We're always looking at ways to make those improvements. If we need additional staff, we will look at some of the things that we're dealing with, some of the threats that we have to face, and make a determination on that, make those requests. And we're always looking at enhancing our systems and processes, so that we provide a safe and secure learning environment for our students. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you about the Office of Safety and Security. Are there any questions at this time?
So we'll go, Katie. Thank you so much, Chief Appel. And just before we get started, just to give you a shout out as well, he was recently appointed to the City of Atlanta Public Safety Commission as well, on behalf of the Board and represent the district. So thank you so much for providing our voice there in that space as well. So we'll start with questions with Katie, Michelle, Jen, Tamara, so we'll just go around this way.
Thank you, Chief Appel. Thank you so much for the work you do and your SROs. I've seen it firsthand. I know that at King Middle School, the SRO has a great relationship with kids, and you can see it. And it's all about keeping all our kids safe in our schools, and we also know what happens in our communities directly impacts our schools. And so appreciate you talking about all our partnerships, working with the city, that intentionality around that, and the timeliness of it. I'm thinking about the incident last night in Roselle Bernie Park, and we know that impacts our children in our schools, and looking at the trauma around that for them, not just those people impacted, but the children who are impacted from that incident.
Yes, ma'am.
And just wanted to know how you all are expanding, because I know you're evolving all the time in the right ways, around connecting with organizations that are on the ground, doing a lot of the work around violence prevention, interruption, which is very personal, deep work that they're very experienced at doing, and knowing that your SROs know what's going on in the schools, and you all know at a higher level, too, with APD. Just anything you could share about maybe looking at opportunities to expand the work, knowing that it's got to be so personal and intimate with our communities, and knowing everything that's going on the ground, and connecting community and schools.
Right. You know, one of the things that we're doing with Atlanta Police Foundation, they have at Promise Centers in the city of Atlanta, and so while we're not as involved as we like to be, that's one of the things that we're looking to enhance and improve our involvement with it at Promise Center. and improve our involvement with it at Promise Center. And we know that a lot of kids have a, there's a great opportunity for kids who are having challenges in, in their community, in their schools. And what better place for us to be a part of that. But so, Atlanta Police Foundation has been very open and, and welcoming to us. We're going to expand on that to try to make sure that we have a lot more presence. We're doing things like lead, this, this weekend, we, this week, this past weekend, we held a scrimmage with some, some of the kids who are in the program and some of our officers. Well, we, we were supposed to have a scrimmage. We didn't have a scrimmage, but we did have some interaction with them. We, we met at the lead office. We did some, they did some, 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 some hitting, some pitching, things like that. We're actually going to do a baseball game with these kids in this month. I cannot recall the date. I'll get the date for you. But it's going to be held at Georgia Tech's baseball field. So we're starting with things like that. And we're very open to any other opportunities that are out there in order to make us, to give us an opportunity to spend time with kids and interact with them.
Awesome. Thank you. And I'll find the right way to forward some information on to superintendent and others that I've, I've heard about. And just, yeah, the opportunities to have those spaces and appreciate AFP, Atlanta Police Foundation, excuse me, expanding those opportunities and partnership and appreciate you all partnering with APD. And knowing that our schools obviously have been playing a role and can even play more of a role around trauma response, which clearly impacts the potential of violence to occur again as well. So thank you so much for all the work you do and always being open to working with the community, to doing everything we can. Appreciate you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Jen, I need to get my speaker on. Huge fan of many of your officers and make a point to try to introduce myself to new ones that I meet. I, I want to know what exactly you're thinking with respect to the clear bag policy, because we are, and maybe this is for Dr. Herring, we are seeing this being implemented across the nation in many school districts where it is very much like if you're going to, you know, Mercedes Benz or the Hawks or wherever else you're going. So I just kind of want to get a feel for that. I, I think we've had, we've seen some interest in that from schools, and we've had a little bit of discord with respect to how the community has been engaged in, in getting that rolled out. So I, I'm sure Dr. Herring wants to follow up on that, but I, I would appreciate a response.
So thank you for the question, Board Member Olympiades. I, I, I first I'll echo what Chief Aplin shared within the presentation, which is, it is a priority for us, and we shared that at the start of the summer, that we engage in discussion. Part of our goal in doing that in this semester is to first start with our go teams, and then scale that through beyond the go teams into, of course, students, staff, and our greater community. One of the reasons why we believe that's important is because it's a district-wide consideration of change. And part of what we've identified in the soft G goals and guardrails is that any decisions that would impact the broader district, that we would bring that into, on in such a way that engagement was a priority. But I also think the heart of your question is just kind of some thoughts around safety. So it's clear that as a consideration, one of the reasons why we're bringing it forward is that it is an added layer amongst other things that would help address the issue of safety. But we also know that there are different arguments around how it should or could work or not work. And we want to be intentional around that. Lots of national discussions. Some of our neighboring districts in greater Atlanta just rolled out a mandate. And I'm not going to suggest that there was not discussion, but certainly started in that space. And wherever we can find some level of flexibility in how we engage is important. The other piece is our schools have had historically some level of flexibility and autonomy around that. So the other word that I want to add into this is grounded in equity, but also a space of safety, because data drives a lot of these decisions relative to where we've seen more alarming concerns around not just infractions, but more serious infractions. So I don't know if that fully answers the question, but I wanted to give some level of, of response that captures all of the elements that come to mind for me as superintendent.
Yeah, I appreciate, I think I still, I'm still on. Yes, I appreciate your response. And I think that's kind of where the public is trying to understand where we are with that, given kind of where we were at the start of the school year. Chief Aplin, my second question may not be for you. It may be for facilities, but where is the list of where I could see the priorities of the security vestibules with respect to schools? Because you had stated that it's in this upcoming SPOLOs, but that's, again, that's a five-year SPOLOs. So it would be interesting to see how we're prioritizing that, and if there's any way that we can make that a greater priority, given, given the, the benefit of that parameter, for lack of better words.
It is not complete. It is something that we are working on. We're just trying to make sure we look at it in a way that's equitable. And we're also trying to see how soon we could actually do it.
Sure. I see Mr. Drake coming up right behind you, so just to give you a heads up.
Good afternoon. Thank you for that question. There are 47 security vestibules that we have slight, slated for SPOLOs 2022. We're working on that, that, that schedule right now. Our goal is, is to have the first 10 for this summer of '23, and then, and then the rest of it after that. So there's 47. The, the basis of, of our prioritization right now is to do the elementary schools first, since they do not have SROs at the, at the facilities, then do middle and high schools afterwards.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Drake. So the elementary first, I'm just taking some notes, and then middle and high. Appreciate that. And then Chief Aplin, my last, my last, well, let me, before I get to my last question, I'll help you with the Promise Center, okay? Because they come to Invest Atlanta and, and thanks to Board Chair Ishay Collins, I sit on that board, and I will bring it up with the administration there to see what we can do to help encourage whatever we can do to support the work that you're doing there. The Promise Center is a very unique organization, which with Erica Long and, and Katie and Erica Mitchell, we had the opportunity to talk to one of our senators about and what great work that the Promise Center offers for children, not just in urban environments, but in any environment where there's a, a need to have a center. So I will do my best to help you there.
Thank you.
I promise. My last question is with respect to sex trafficking. And I, I don't know what the, what you do across the district, but I would like to encourage you to do it across the district. And I take this as a mother of a freshman who I've talked about since middle school, about the importance of being very careful on the belt line and being very careful with her friends and making sure that she has a buddy system and that she can never be alone. I, I do believe that there's a lot of, across the entire city. I mean, we're number one here for sex trafficking in the nation. I think there's a lot to be said to make sure that we are implementing some sort of programming for children as young as maybe fifth, sixth grade. And I know that sounds kind of young, but I think that's what they start to target, depending on the development of a young woman. And through those steps, I've had this discussion with my daughter literally every year for the past four years, because I want her to be independent and I want her to be successful and I want her to be proud of who she is. But at the same time, she's in a very vulnerable situation with respect to the city. And so I just kind of, you know, whatever you can do to help us, you know, push that out throughout the district. I know it's more concentrated in some parts of the city that are definitely closer to the airport than others. But nonetheless, I think, I think all of our young ladies are, are targeted as, like I said, a number one city.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Chief.
Hello.
Obviously, I, you know, enjoyed spending so much time with you last week. We talked about a few things that have bubbled up here today. The level of engagement around clear bags and what the community thinks, I think is very smart. And it's outlined well, sort of the order. Just for community clarification, can we give an update or just kind of a high level on what does timing look like that, for that? Because some, I think some people think this is going to be implemented in January, like a mandate in January. So I just want to make sure that, like, people are getting this, like, one single source of truth tonight.
That would be for me, Board Member McDonald. So as I shared, we would start with go teams and then scale out. We are not poised at this time to say that there's an intent to start in January. But part of what we would like to do is go into deep engagement to see how that elevates just from the feedback of stakeholders. If we discover in that feedback that there is some level of consensus and identification of need that would put us in January, I don't want to take that off the table. But for clarity, that's not a stated goal at this juncture. What's our focus is to have the appropriate level of engagement. We will continue to roll out the full timeline of that. We want it to get into the start of the school year, recognizing that we're just in the first few days, but that's certainly a fair question.
Okay, thank you. And I know that obviously you're being very thoughtful. It's just interesting how a clear backpack at school is so helpful and a clear backpack outside of school can be so dangerous for kids. So just trying to keep that in mind, like, I don't, I don't have a wonderful solution to that, but I can, I'm more worried about my kid's, like, you know, underpants being in his bag at school, because he has to go to football practice after. But you have kids, like, that we don't, don't want devices or laptops and bags that are really visible. So just trying to figure out, like, what's the best solution to, like, that hybrid?
Understood.
The second question, which I'm very, like, I love this idea of, you know, the kids being required to have ID on their persons when they're at the high school level. Do we, hopefully that is not something that needs a lot of community engagement, like employees wear badges. We have ours. You know, I'm, I would love to see that. I think that would just be so helpful for administrators and teachers at the schools. Do we have a ballpark on time for that component?
Do not have a ballpark, but there has been some discussion about that. That is something that, that we support and we think that is important for our students to have ID cards.
Agreed.
And I will just add to that, because I, I don't have a, a, an equals right off top, but certainly there are several of our high schools that already practice that. Just, I'm not able to tell you in this moment how many across all of our, all of our schools are doing that.
Thank you. And I appreciate so much of your team being here tonight, too.
Tamara?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for this presentation and thank you for all that you and your team do. I mean, it is really a great service for us and just wanted to give you some appreciation.
Thank you.
Some of my questions have already been answered, and I will echo the thing about, you know, the, you know, there's a, there's a flip side of that clear backpack. You know, we have a lot of kids who walk to and from school and, which is different than some of our neighboring counties, so our neighboring school system. So it's just something to keep in mind. And I appreciate that there would be a lot of engagement around it. Interesting to hear what people have to say. I just want to have me one comment about the Say Something anonymous system. It's not just for potential violence. I mean, it has, like, if you're concerned about a classmate, you know, his personal safety, it's, it's, it's a great way to tie them together with the kind of help and resources that they need. So it's not simply about identifying a threat in the building. It's a really good system. I had a question about the juvenile court pathways. You said that the Student Services is participating in those meetings. Just a question about how are we bringing, you know, how are we helping the kids that are in our schools that have had contact with the juvenile justice system and how we're, you know, how are we, are we intentionally supporting them in the schools? I'm, I'm sure we are. I just don't know how that's going about.
Board Member Jones, if I understand your question, is that how do we onboard our students back into the traditional school setting, once they've had some level of interface with the juvenile system?
Correct.
So that comes out of our schools division. And so there is a level of support that's provided. I don't want to misrepresent what that is, but beyond wherever their previous, previous location was, as it relates to any type of activity, there is an onboarding protocol, if you would allow us to, to get that to you, to the full board, if you will. I'll, I'll be glad to provide that. I just simply don't want to misrepresent it. It is a process, and there are staff members that help ensure that. And then, of course, there is communication with school-based support service staff, whether that's school counselor, school social worker, school psychologist, and/or if there is a need for special education services, IEPs. I, but I think that's what I want to name first, so we can get some more information to come forward with that. There's a process in place.
All right. Thank you. I really appreciate that. Looking forward to seeing that. Let me see if there's any questions that I have that have not been answered.
Did Ms. Turner want to speak to that?
Oh, okay.
Okay. So let, thank you. That way we'll go ahead and answer that.
Good afternoon. Sorry about the transition, but just to speak about the support that we provide for students that are coming from adjudication or maybe coming from DJJ. Those students apply for placement via a placement link through the student discipline office. Once we receive that information, we make deliberate efforts to contact the student's probation officer, any officers that are assigned to the student and advocates that are assigned by the juvenile court system. And then we are partnering in conjunction with our social workers, any of our counselors that have contact and have supported the students, as well as reaching out with the schools. Each one of those placement requests are reviewed individually. And we are taking a number of things into consideration. The student's most recent discipline, the progress that they've made, if they've had any support from outside entities, their most recent placement, and then thinking about as well what type of services we can provide in each environment. After we have taken that information and reviewed it holistically, we then make a determination as to where their student should be placed. And at times, we are also using Hank Aaron as a transitional piece, seeing that the student may need additional supports, especially if they are coming from being in a facility, providing that gateway and leveraging Hank Aaron New Beginnings Academy as a transitional piece to give them a segue from coming from a more strict environment and making that pathway to the general setting. During that time, and, and thanks to the buildout of our program, our student parent advocates are in contact with parents. They're also making appearances and supporting students while they're at Hank Aaron New Beginnings Academy, should that be the placement. And then they're also taking part in supporting in a transition meeting, once that student comes from our alternative setting back to our general schools. So we're really working to provide a continuum of support during that transition piece from adjudication or from a disciplinary placement into APS. And if it's at Hank Aaron New Beginnings Academy, also making sure that we're supporting that student as they make their transition back into our general setting.
And Ms. Turner, I, I brought you up, didn't say your title, so my apologies. She is our interim executive director of school supports that clearly helps to manage this level of transition. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. That's really good information, because, I mean, kids who make a mistake, we need to be given every support and opportunity to just get back to normal. So I appreciate that.
Certainly. Thank you so much.
I think most of them have been answered. But thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Here are no other questions. Thank you so much, Chief Aplin. We truly appreciate it. I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Herring.
Yes, ma'am. And as Chief Aplin takes his seat, I want to just professionally and personally appreciate not just Chief Aplin, but our full Atlanta Public Schools Police Department force. We have had an extraordinary start of the first week of school. I've heard that feedback from so many. And the presence, as it relates to safety and security of our team makes such a huge difference. And whenever there are issues, they are immediate to respond and very caring in how they help address circumstances. So I just want to appreciate and thank Chief Aplin and his team at large for their leadership and their security.
Thank you so much.
Our second presentation following Chief Aplin is Mr. Travis Norvell, our chief strategy officer, and Dan, Mr. Dan Drake, executive director of facilities, who will provide the facilities master planning update. Mr. Norvell, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board Members, Superintendent Herring, and the APS community. This evening, you'll have an opportunity to vote on the creation of a new K-5 elementary school in the Midtown Cluster. Before this afternoon's presentation, we'll share the final recommendation as a follow-up to our June presentation impacting the 23-24 school year. The key takeaway for this afternoon is that we're continuing to recommend a new K-5 elementary school for the Midtown Cluster, but we are recommending a change in the grade levels grandfathered, and I'll talk about that during our presentation. So here you can see the same map that was presented on June 6th, that was slightly modified from the first read in May. The differences- The differences between the May and the June were the zero students from Morningside to Garden Hills, that new development, and a slight modification of Morningside to Inman in the current southwest portion of the zone, keeping Northview and Burwick and Morningside in a portion of Courtney. So as I mentioned, there's no changes to this map from the June conversation. And so because there are no changes in the map, there's also no changes in the capacity. But just to remind you that the proposed redistricting will reduce the overcrowding at Morningside and Springdale Park. Both schools currently cannot fit in their existing school building. This also allows the reduction in overcrowding at Morningside, Springdale Park and Mary Lynn, allows those schools and communities to explore other programming, administrative transfers, pre-K seats, among other ideas for their buildings. As a reminder to the community, these shifts at the elementary level provide the district the flexibility to make changes to boundaries if one school sees major changes or shifts in enrollment in development. And so as part of the facilities process going forward, just like with all schools, we'll continue to monitor the shifts in population changes. What I do want to spend a little bit of time on is grandfathering. As discussed before, we understand that there will be some stability impacts facing our students and we're working on ways to address those. So one is we push the opening of the school to 23-24 versus this school year and the other is expanding grandfathering. We are recommending grandfathering for rising fourth and fifth graders. That would be the current third and fourth graders. So those who are currently in third grade will be able to finish their third, fourth and fifth grade, so half of their elementary school career with their existing schools. But one note I want to make on grandfathering, as we do use an equity lens at the forefront, is I'm going to use the term grandfathering because that's what's in our policy and that's what's in our statement. But internally, we are going to look at other ways to reference grandfathering because there are some negative impacts and connotations of the word grandfathering, going back to how black citizens were given the vote. And so we'll work with our equity team, Erica Long and Corey Edwards, to discuss new language like preapproval, preauthorized, legacy, some other words that don't have the connotations that grandfathering has. So if you don't mind giving me a little grace as I continue to use grandfathering for this conversation because that is a known term in this community. You may remember that the facilities consultants identified that there is space to expand grandfathering up to third through fifth graders, while our standard practice is just rising fifth graders. As part of our engagement prior to our June meeting, let's talk feedback, formal notices from P T As and P T Os following the June meeting, and internal conversations with all impacted APS departments, including equity, schools, academics, operations, we heard both challenges and support for grandfathering. Our recommendation is to provide grandfathering or preapproval for those rising fourth and fifth graders. This provides stability for those families wishing to stay in their existing school, but also more stability for those, for the school planning process that takes place for both the creation of a new K-5, as well as for other schools facing major impact. We did hear in different resolutions that were approved since June, the Mary Lynn PTA resolution called out grandfathering as not an option that provides any benefits to the Inman Park neighborhood. And the Spark PTA resolution called out some equity challenges with grandfathering. And while we know it's not that, just like with this decision, there's differences of opinions on grandfathering. And so we're trying to balance those two differences with this recommendation. For planning purposes, you'll see the timeline for grandfathering is January 9th through January 20th, which then gives an opportunity to know how many seats are available for the general administrative transfer window, which is February 6th to 24th. So that could be for siblings as well as for those students that are not grandfathered as part of the recommendation. And so if approved this evening, here are the next steps, our immediate next steps as a district. We'll collaborate with internal and external communities to build an implementation plan for the recommendation. Most importantly, we'll begin the principal hiring process. The goal of the principal hiring process is to bring a principal to the September board meeting. We'll also build out staffing plans and impact, creating implement plans to ease transitions, communicate the decision broadly once this is approved, and then build excitement in the community for the new elementary school. I do want to call out because I know there will be a follow-up question on the principal selection process. And so while we're working out what that looks like, the school does not have a go-team in place. And a go-team is usually, if a new school is approved, it would not have a go-team in place. And because go-teams play a role in the selection process, we all work to ensure that the voices of those families attending the school are part of that process. So the first step after this evening will be to reach out to go-team members at Morningside and Springdale Park, the impacted school communities, to find out if any of those parents would be impacted with sending their children to the new K-5 school. And if not, then go to the next level of those go-team members who have run for office but weren't selected to find out if they would be a part of it. And then on to P T As and other form, kind of formal representatives to ensure that the parents who will attend the K-5 are part of the principal selection process. We're also looking at what staff looks like because staff also wouldn't be identified until the spring. So possibly teachers of the year, not just Morningside and Springdale Park, but also Howard to give that kind of cluster-wide look, as well as community-wide organizations, like either SENS or Grady Cares or others that have a cluster-wide view. So we are building out what that process looks like, working with HR and the associate superintendent to figure out the best way to tier community feedback on the principal selection process. Once we solidify those participants, we'll share that timeline broadly so people can participate. One of the other areas of phase one, if you remember, this is one piece of phase one of the facilities master planning. The other piece was about high school capacity. And so some schools, like in the Midtown and Jackson cluster, are facing space constraints, while other high schools like Carver and Booker T. Washington High Schools could accommodate more students or programming. And so I want to pause now for those who aren't specific to Inman as a K-5 to pay attention to the next steps for engagement. So not just Midtown, Jackson, Carver and Washington High School communities, but those that were impacted by the consultant's recommendation last year. So you may remember Dunbar was recommended, as well as Centennial was recommended. I want to make sure that they're paying attention because now we're back and now is the time for them to reengage with us to help co-create the options for high school capacity in the Midtown, Jackson, Carver and Washington clusters. We heard them and we paused and now it's time to hear from them again. So we want them to join us this fall. We'll discuss, you'll see a kickoff meeting on August 30th. This week, we'll be pushing out flyers and links and ways to support. We'll offer both virtual and in-person. The way it'll work is we'll have one large meeting that talks about capacity for those schools and clusters that are over capacity, as well as those that have room to grow and kind of set the stage. If here's what the data is, here's what the information is. And then we'll break into smaller groups so that people cross clusters but with the same challenge can work together. So those schools that are facing capacity challenges, as well as those schools that have space to grow, can work together as communities to both dive deeper into the impact, brainstorm solutions and prioritize. Then we bring everyone back together as a large group to share, here's what we heard from each other, what do you think? What are your ideas? Kind of talking about it before bringing it internally to review. We're building off of some lessons learned from the last round of engagement on the importance of smaller focus groups and cross-neighborhood focus groups and cross-cluster focus groups, as well as cross-challenge. So there are things that we can learn from those schools that are over capacity, as well as things we can learn from those schools that have room to grow. And so we're looking forward to spending that time this fall. And then we'll continue, you'll see on the bottom, an internal review of some of those solutions. And then if we need to reconvene those small groups, bring them back together. And by December, identify if there's board actions that come out of some of these solutions. So if there is rezoning that comes out of these solutions, then what does that look like from the board? Or are these things that can be handled outside of board action? And so that's kind of the walkthrough. You'll see more information this week as we push it all out. And go-teams will be included as part of the small groups. So they'll be their own dedicated small groups, all go-teams impacted by this work. And with that, also on, while this wraps up the overview of phase one, phase two engagement efforts begin on Thursday at a board retreat. And so we'll be sharing all of the engagement, including this, related to what the Sizmore consultants bring on Thursday on how we're going to engage the community around those big buckets of recommendations. So thank you for your time and engagement and Mr. Drake and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you so, thank you so much Travis. Any questions? Michelle?
Tamara. Tamara, would you like to go first?
No. Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay, all right, I just, just trying to be polite. So Mr. Norvell, thank you so much. I just kind of want to bring up a couple of quick points. Basically, what some of the feedback has been from the community with respect to the grandfathering is concern about the, the younger siblings. My understanding is, and you did not speak to this, and I know you did at another meeting, but I would appreciate you going over it again, is that we will be having administrative transfer opportunities for families to apply so that their child can enroll to stay in a school of a particular parent's choice. Is that correct?
Correct, and I'll make sure that Erica can follow up if, whether on the sibling preference, if it has made it through the process prepared. Okay. So rising fourth and fifth graders would be pre-approved. They would still need to apply so that we can understand budget impact and staffing impact. But they would be a pre-approved, pre-authorized if they apply through that January through January 20th window.
Yes.
Then following that, the next window would be for other students as well as sibling preferences. So those students that are kindergarten through third graders who may want to continue but don't have siblings, but then priority giving to the siblings of those who are grandfathered in.
Okay, so I appreciate that. And obviously, we're looking at January and February for this process to take place, but you, whenever we can communicate that to the, the, the cluster would be very helpful because it's, there's quite a bit of chatter about that.
Absolutely, and we do want to not only just share and communicate about grandfathering and the process and give enough lead time, but we also want to provide, create as much planning and excitement this fall if approved so that people feel comfortable making the decision on whether to grandfather or not with as much information and comfort as they feel helpful.
Absolutely, thank you. I, I just want to share a little bit of feedback. Back in the day before go-teams, when we did principal selection committees, it, it, almost every single one of those organizations that you mentioned was at the table. And there are also foundations within the Midtown cluster that should probably be considered if they would like to participate. Sometimes the foundations feel as though their purview is a little bit different than say the PTA or the PTO or the SENS or the go-team. But I just wanted to share that with you because that is something that we used to do a long time ago to make sure, until we got go-teams, until we got that a little bit more finalized, if you will. And I know we're in a little bit of a tricky situation. I do also want to express some sentiments from the community. If, if information could be shared in Spanish and as we move forward, and I know you talked about this at another meeting, pre-K lottery options, and then a little bit more information around how academics, equity and social emotional learning will be rolled out, not just in the new elementary school, but with, with respect to the balance that's going to impact the elementary schools, if that makes sense, because it is going to be quite of a shift. And then I also wanted to make sure we included Inman Park with respect to who's at the table when we're talking about what's happening, because Inman Park, I know they're going to Spark, but again, whatever we're looking to do across all the elementary schools that we have, folks there that are engaging and kind of the restructure of what's happening in the elementary schools. And, um, uh, all right, Mr. Drake, I'm going to get you on this one. Portables and, and the vestibule, the security vestibule, that's, that's been a kind of a hot topic that's been brought up recently.
Sure. You're referring to the Inman facility, correct?
Correct, specifically to Inman with respect to if we are going to be able to remove the portables that are currently there. And I guess, I know there's, there is elementary school playground equipment, but if there's going to be some sort of, I don't know what you're going to do, whatever you want to do, and then where we are with the security vestibule with respect to that.
So as, um, so let's talk about the portables first. The portables, our goal is to remove those portables this summer. So as soon as that Morningside moves out at the end of May, our goal is to get those portables off the campus and see that, that where those, where they will be, where they're currently at. So that's, that's number one. So our security vestibules, as I just talked about before, we've got 47 of them. Inman is one of the 47. I looked it up just before I came up here. They are in the second phase, which is the summer of '24, um, under the current schedule for their security vestibule.
All right, and while I've got you up here, I just want to let you know that I believe Mr. Norvell was at this meeting that Zeist, the Zeist Foundation, along with some Emory fellows have done a presentation with respect to what they'd like to see happen with the Cohen facility. And I certainly hope that you're aware of, of where the community is with that and, and, and what we can do to start beginning engaging them in a, in a, in a different process potentially that, that feels not quite what we've had to go through over the past two years, or at least what I've had to go through over the past two years, if that's fair. And I don't mean that to say that nothing's not been done properly. It's just been very difficult to manage from a board member's perspective.
You're talking about the Cohen facility, well, we have staff and everyone already in the building?
Yeah, so, so, so Zeist and some Emory, two Emory fellows did a really wonderful kind of deep dive about how they would like to see the facility being used and being, being brought back as a middle school facility. And I know Tamara was on the call. Mr. Norvell, were you on, I thought you were on the call.
Yeah, we don't need, yeah, not, yeah, I was just, I was just curious, making sure we're talking about the, the, we weren't talking about a vacant building, but we're talking about a building that's currently occupied with APS, that are currently used with APS.
It's currently used for, for training.
Got it.
However, the community would like to see it come back to help alleviate some of the, the capacity within Jackson. And I just want to make sure that we are, and I was, I was very explicit with, after the presentation, that we are on at least a two-year timeline because Cohen's up for an HVAC renovation as well as swing space for tumor as it becomes renovated. However, I wanted to make sure that we begin the engagement process with the Jackson cluster about how we want to use the facility moving forward.
Okay, I, I don't think that's our purview as a board to move in that direction or create an action plan.
No, no, I'm just sharing. No, no, I'm just sharing feedback.
And to respect, to respect the time and the topic being that we're really talking about recommendation, one that really impacts the, the Midtown cluster because we do have this, we do have our progress monitoring piece. If it's okay for, if it's okay for you, Michelle, we could just, can we?
No, I don't, I don't need, I was just sharing information because I don't believe Mr. Drake was at that meeting. So just making sure he's informed of what, where the community is headed.
Got it, okay, got you.
I'm not making any recommendations for anything, just making sure that everyone's aware of where the community wants to go.
Got it, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, was there anything else you had, Michelle?
Great. Tamara.
Okay, Michelle asked, answered, or asked most of my questions, so, and, and I was on that. And I will say that the fellows themselves were mostly doing, they were exploring how to engage, like methods of engaging with communities. So that was the focus of theirs, but it was, you know, at the request of the neighborhood. So just so people know that. It wasn't a, anyway. No, it wasn't. It wasn't, so I'm sorry, you know, I don't think, I don't think it came across that way. Where, let's see what else. So I really do appreciate, you know, how you've laid out phase two. I have high hopes because one of the issues I think we've ran into in phase one is not having people talk to each other. You know, and I really appreciate the idea of having, you know, the small groups and the cross, what do you call it? Cross-challenge, you know, discussions, because I think that's going to be really important. Of all the things that have come out through this process, I think that engagement was, is one of the biggest ones. You know, I think that, we'll talk more about this tonight, but you know, the, it really has highlighted two or three things for me and engagement is huge. And so I appreciate this level of detail. And, you know, if we could just, you know, continue to tell people what to expect, like, you know, going back to, you know, the setting expectations of, you know, how it is we're going to be interacting about this, which you talked about before when you brought forth, you know, sort of the, the work you're doing on, you know, those levels of engagement. So if we could just continue to let people know, you know, what is going to be the locus of this conversation and what, what are going to be the expectations of how people are going to be able to interact with one another and the administration and the board.
For that, Tamara, I appreciate it. One last comment from Katie, then we're going to move forward.
Thank you, real quickly, around budgeting, potential gaps, things like that, questions I've received, is that something that will be addressed in the next phase, Mr. Norvell?
Sure, and I, I can share based on budget and then if there's follow-up questions because, you know, Sure, and I I can share based on budget and then if there's follow-up questions because you'll understand what I'm saying. Then CFO Bracken could share. But so a recap from the June meeting, board meeting, we walked through some budget scenarios for the different schools based on the impact. So for those schools that were facing a reduction in students, they would be able to maintain similar non-personnel per pupil and average class sizes with their current budget. They may need to reduce a 1.0 equivalent non-instruction FTE unless we provide additional transition funding, which we'll explore in the FY 24 budget process. As for the new K5, in addition to the their what their budget will be, their student success formula budget, additional funding is provided on a kind of an allotment basis for ESOL, IRR, sell site manager, psychologist, social worker, all of those things. And so in addition for this school year, the support outside of the budget is the Office of Strategy Engagement. We'll work at the Office of Schools and other divisions to provide project, change management, transition support. And to build off of Board Member Olympiades' question about SEL and academics and equity and even where the role of some of these foundations are. That's all part of a, we used to call them community launch teams. So when we created Hollis or Hays or some of these other schools, we brought all of them together to think about how we can kind of support that transition and what the new school looks like, with the first step of finding a principal so they can be a part of that conversation. But that's kind of the budget piece, and then more information once we know the number of students, preschool.
Wonderful, thank you, and appreciate the timeline about next steps, you know, having the holistic conversation for the entire district, which that community engagement plan ties into student outcomes focused governance and having a clear strategy. So thank you so much for that, and I will certainly be sharing it. Thank you.
Are we going to have a chance to talk more about the budget piece of it tonight? When we get the vote going, or is this the part that you want to talk about? I don't want to hang hold up anything.
Wait.
Yes, okay.
I'm not quite sure what the question would be related to budget, so.
Right, well, yeah, that's that was what would be the question related to budget in regards to this after this evening?
It's just one of the things that has really come, I mean, because I've heard a lot from the community. I mean, and I have read and, you know, you know, everything that people have brought in, I have I've really gone through, even if I haven't responded. And one of the things that has come up loud and clear is the funding issue. And, you know, the we have, you know, no matter if it's a, you know, a small school, you know, that is in fear of closing or, you know, a school like this that, you know, fears losing population. Because everybody is fearing, you know, that their child is not going to have, you know, the level of academic support that they need. And I think that what it has done is it exposed, you know, a commonality across schools across the district about how how do we make sure that we are able to provide the kind of supports and resources for every school? Regardless of how how many kids it has, you know, all across the district. So that's a concern we share everywhere. You know, we have really big schools in the suburbs because they have economies of scale. We're a city. And, you know, we can't operate the same way that, you know, they do out in the suburbs. And so I do want to have a larger conversation, and I'll I'll bring it up again tonight when we talk about the vote, but.
And I so I appreciate you sharing that level of detail, Board Member Jones. That was not, I don't believe that was what we were going to go into greater detail tonight. That was your question after the vote, no ma'am. But certainly a conversation to come back to, Ms. Bracken.
For sure. Thank you and good afternoon, Board Chair Collins, members of the board, Dr. Herring. So it will be an ongoing conversation, and the board adopts an annual budget. So it is an annual process, and we are always taking into account the factors that are in place at that. The reason we do it on an annual basis is because demographics change, enrollments change, school by school on any given year. Whether the district is making decisions that drive those changes or whether it's just changes that are happening in our broader economy or broader demographics. So we will review that on an annual basis. However, I can say historically, we do have precedent for transition policies and our SSF funding formula that we could look at revisiting as we move forward with any changes with in the facilities master planning process. Also, I can say that we have run various scenarios looking at different impacts. And we've shown that based on the demographics as they are today and the enrollments as they are now, that a similar, the the budgets overall as a totality will absolutely adjust. As enrollment is changing, the budgets will change. However, we can show that the per pupil allocation actually increases in most of these schools. The average class size could be maintained at the same. Again, principals have discretion in how they allocate their budgets. But if we built it like to like as of today, they could maintain average class sizes and average per pupil expenditures for non-personnel similar to what schools are allocating today. So those, that's kind of what we've seen. As Travis mentioned, there may be some changes in what could be purchased as far as administration or other non-instructional positions if enrollment decreases substantially. But again, that's where we might want to look at transition policies for the short short term to move schools into that transition. And it can be an ongoing conversation for sure.
Thank you. I do want to have that ongoing conversation because I do think that that's something that we share across all the schools that we have, you know, in the district. And, you know, if we can come around, you know, and talk about, you know, equitable funding and making sure that we have a level of access to programming and services. You know, that would help avoid some of the real pain that causes people to fight so much. I mean, not just within neighborhoods and within schools, you know, but between clusters and, you know, across the city. And so
Yeah.
That to me, that's a huge concern, and, you know, I'm going to ask my colleagues to work with me on that. Because it's not just the transition, it's the ongoing. And having been a go team member and seeing budgets in LSC chair before that, you know, it gets to a point where, yes, the per pupil funding, you know, that that's one thing. But, you know, at some point, it takes a critical mass of students to, you know, maintain a level of services. And so we need to start addressing, you know, and that's not just for a school like this. It's for a school that has a very small enrollment. So just so that we're always on, you know, having it front in mind that, you know, it's about getting the services in the schools for the kids first when we do the budgeting.
Absolutely. I think that's a good place where our conversations around equity and allocation meet the the autonomy and flexibility that our school principals have and the flexibility of our school-based leadership with the allocations once they receive them. So while this is an ongoing conversation we're having about an equitable allotment based on student attributes, then necessarily translating to an equitable experience within each school. And those conversations during the budget planning process where we we can show how we're giving the dollars out. But then every school leader is making their own decisions about how they leverage those dollars within their school, which from the outside could look like inequities in programming. If we're not really telling that story and that narrative. So, yeah, absolutely excited to have those ongoing conversations about how we can tell that narrative a little bit and tie those things together a little bit more smoothly. Nobody likes talking about budget.
Thank you, thank you for that.
I think that is.
I appreciate that.
Wasn't the signal to say next. Thank you so much, Ms. Bracken, Mr. Drake and Mr. Norvell. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. I echo that, Board Chairwoman. Next, we have back to the podium, Ms. Bracken, our Chief Financial Officer. We're ready for the strategic plan update, which includes the monthly financial update regarding the millage process, quarterly student activity reports and budget adjustments.
All right, thank you. So today I will provide an update on the millage process, property tax timeline, and present the fourth quarter financials for the student activity accounts for FY 2022. I also want to highlight what I will not be presenting today, which is the financials for this month as we transition from FY 2022 to FY 2023. I will be bringing both the year-end financials for FY 22 and the July through August financials for FY 23 to the October board meeting. Also, for the second year, I will not be discussing the need for a TAN, a tax salary, tax anticipation note. We are on track for bills to go out sometime in September, and we are currently have, we have cash reserves sufficient through November. We have several budget adjustments, all related to state grants to adjust to the actual award amount. All adjustments affect both revenue and expenditures. These are increases of $408 for CTAE apprenticeship programs, increases of $5,328 for CTAE supervision grant, increase of $5,136 for state agriculture extended day, and increases of $2,163 for state agriculture extended year. There's an offsetting decrease of $9,077 for CTAE extended day. Details for these adjustments can be found in Agenda Item 6.1. And Agenda Item 8.5 includes the detailed information report for special revenue adjustments, less than $1 million that have occurred in June. On Slide four, I provide an overview of the millage recommendation for FY 2023, which is tax year 22. Overall, the Fulton County Digest is up by a net amount of 7.5%. And the DeKalb Digest is up 13% due to an additional growth and development and the increased values of properties. Based on our assumptions, the digest would exceed our budgeted revenue for FY 2023 by approximately $11 million. A full rollback to the rollback rate of 19.522 would mean a decrease to our FY 23 budget by 31 million. So we're recommending a partial rollback from 20.740 mils to 20.5 mils. We're holding three public hearings on the millage. The first was this morning at 10:00 a.m. The second will be later today at 6:00 p.m. The final hearing will be 10:00 a.m. on August 15th, after which the board will take action to set the millage rate. Maintaining this timeline is crucially important as the city is scheduled to ratify our millage at a meeting scheduled later in the day on the 15th. And with this timeline, as I mentioned, we're hopeful bills will be out in September. For Atlanta, our bills are due 45 days after issuance. And we usually do get bulk of our tax payments around three to four weeks after bills go out. The relief for taxpayers for a full rollback depends on their home value and whether or not they have a homestead exemption. As a reminder, the district worked with legislators to remove the sunset on the APS homestead exemption and locked in a $50,000 homestead exemption. For instance, on a home valued at $300,000, the savings from a full rollback would be about $146 per year. If that same property had a homestead exemption, the savings would be about $85 per year. However, as I mentioned, that full rollback would mean we would need to cut our revenue projections by 31 million. Recall that we set the digest for the entire city, and much of the growth that we would be offsetting is within TADS or the tax allocation districts. And we do not have access to those dollars. By partially rolling back to 20.5, the district is able to maintain the current FY 2023 adopted budget while offering some relief to taxpayers. On Slide seven, you'll find the summary for the FY 2022 fourth quarter student activity funds report. Schools collected $3.73 million in activity funds and spent about $3.66 million. Compared to quarter three, revenues decreased 122,000 or 3% and increased 1.8 million from last year. Expenditures increased 432,000 or 13% from quarter three and increased 1.7 million from last year. The year-to-year increases is due to activities ramping back up after disruptions caused by COVID. The detailed report can be found in Agenda Item 8.4. And with that, I conclude my presentation and can take any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions?
Here and now, and I'm going to give a shout out to my former colleague, Nessie Meister, who will be very excited at the TAN announcement. But thank you so much, Ms. Bracken. We really appreciate you and your team's great work.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Board Chairwoman. I echo that appreciation to both Ms. Bracken and the full finance team. We are now ready to begin the student.
Tamara, do you have anything?
Cynthia was having a question. She can't get in.
Lisa, there was the, there was a question.
I'm sorry. She's wanting to know about the millage rate, wanting to ask what the state mandated ceiling is that we're grandfathered in on and make sure we're not going below it. Because if we do, we cannot ever go above it again.
Sure, I don't think the question has been answered about whether or not if we do drop below the 20 mil cap, if we would be able to go back above it, that's probably a question better suited for the legal team. But however, there is a precedent for city governments in particular to exceed the 20 mil cap that is legislatively placed on other school districts. And so the 20.5 does keep us above that. The the full rollback would take us to 19.52, which is below that 20 mil cap.
Thank you so much. I don't know if she's available. Is she still online with us to hear the response? Okay. Okay.
She said thank you.
And then also would just be while she is listening, make sure just to text Pierre and also me so that we can make sure as in rotation and just keep us, keep us on target. So thank you so much.
Thank you again, Board Chairwoman. It is now, we're now ready to begin the Student Outcomes Focused Governance Progress Monitoring Report around Goal One, which is literacy proficiency. As a reminder, this is a discussion. And so for those who are connected with us virtually, there will not be a series of slides that accompany this presentation. And live that it is based on our structure for student outcomes focused governance. It is a exchange and dialogue and conversation between the superintendent and the board. And we will be prepared to respond to questions as provided after I've talked us through a a a summary. At this time, though, Board Chairwoman, it would be appropriate that I would turn to you to start this this level of engagement. And if I may also, just a reminder, this is our first student outcomes focused governance engagement. Kudos to our school board in the preparation and training for this, for which we have been doing over the last year and a half. And so we are looking forward to our first discussion.
Great, thank you so much, Dr. Heron, and thank you so much for setting the stage for today's conversation and our first, our first moving forward as this is part of our goals that we set for our student outcome focused governance. And just to remind, just to remind the audience, progress monitoring provides us, your school board, the opportunity to evaluate the alignment between the community's vision, which is our goals towards student outcomes, our guard rails that we set, as well as have a open dialogue and understanding of the reality of where we are as a district in regards to our performance, our student performance, growth, and what needs to happen in that space. And so for what we know from the report that was attached, that was available to Assembly, but also that we all have had the opportunity to digest our board goal monitoring for Goal One, which states percentage of students in grades third through eighth scoring proficient or above in reading as measured by the Georgia milestones will increase from 36.9% in August of 2029 to 47% in August of 2026. And so I would like to take a few moments just to review some of the norms and expectations for the session. And then, of course, I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Heron, to take us through the discussion of the district progress towards the goals that we've set. You all have the progress monitoring form in front of us with those questions to think about of creating and engaging dialogue with the superintendent, understanding what are the factors that currently leads to the levels of achievement that we are seeing? How can the district make progress towards these goals? What are some of the strategies? What are also some of the changes and adjustments that we want to focus on? And what will the district require in additional resources to meet this goal? Just also thinking about the the questions in our comments, shouldn't be more, should should not be evaluative, but really getting a, really diving in deeper to understanding what's what's happening and also what what needs to happen to continue to monitor our progress. Of course, remember our guardrails, this is also not the space to tell the superintendent what to do or suggest administrative actions, sitting in our space as board members, as a governing governing body. But shifting our focus to true student outcome focused governance. And so I just wanted to lead lead there. And if there are conversations or questions that pulls us more to what we should not be doing, just being open and giving me grace to be, you know, as I may check a little bit, or push us to kind of stay focused on the targeted discussion that we have today. We have allocated a We have allocated ninety minutes for this conversation. It may go to the four ninety. It may not, but our goal is to walk out with a clear understanding of our progress monitoring Goal One and our vision moving forward. So with that, Dr. Heron, I am going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for setting the stage for this discussion. And so first, I would like to provide some background and content. This will be a little redundant, but we think it's important. Board Goal One is based on the percentage of students in grades three through eight who score at an achievement level of proficient or distinguished on the Georgia Milestones English Language Arts Assessment. As a reminder, Georgia Milestones is designed to measure how well students have learned content standards and their readiness for the next grade level. Scores of proficient or greater are considered higher achievement and are well above the state average. We do, however, need to keep in mind that due to disruptions to home and school environments, school year twenty twenty two scores are not comparable to pre-pandemic years. The Georgia Department of Education's Deputy Superintendent of Assessment and Accountability, Allison Timberlake, has advised us that we use caution when comparing results to prior years. That's an important point of consideration as we move towards identifying our benchmarks. We've had opportunities to think about twenty nineteen and before, and that has now not been the advisement of our State Department. So again, they do advise that we use caution. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty one through twenty twenty two scores will be used by the state to set a new baseline for future performance assessments and accountability. So that's important to note as we think about our current benchmark that we've identified. So in that space, I'd like to call your attention to Figure One, where we can see our target goal of forty seven percent proficient or higher by school year twenty twenty six. Looking at the orange dotted line, we can see that thirty one point two percent of APS scholars in grades three through eight scored proficient or higher. Again, that was thirty one point two percent of students in grades three through eight scored proficient or higher on the Georgia Milestones ELA assessment. It's important to note that this is lower than our baseline score of thirty six point nine percent, which is from the twenty nineteen school year. And based on our MAP data and interruptions in the learning environment during the pandemic, we spoke about our anticipation of a potential decline of this drop. So to that end, this has not caught us by surprise. We anticipated that just simply given the interruptions of the last two years. So I'd like to bring you now to Figure Two. This figure shows a breakdown of performance levels by grade level. We wanted to provide a more granular view of the data because some interventions are specific to grades three through five, while other interventions are specific to grades six through eight. Third grade performance correlates with the fact that these students have spent the least amount of time in a traditional in-person, in a person's school setting. I just want to repeat that. Third grade performance correlates with the fact that these students have spent the least amount of time in a traditional in-person school setting. And current third graders attended kindergarten and had their first grade year interrupted by COVID nineteen. So I'd like to look at Table One, where we can see sixth, fifth, and eighth grade students who had the highest gaps between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty two. The implementation of a new middle grades curriculum, Amplify, is an outlier that I think needs to be considered, so I'd like to lift that for this review. Amplify ELA was introduced during the twenty twenty one school year when many students were still learning remotely. And last year, the first full year of implementation with all students back in the classroom was the first full implementation of Amplify. We will continue to improve the fidelity and integrity of the implementation. This is a different level of teaching and is very different from traditional instruction. Relative to Table Two, we see that multiracial, female, and Black students show the highest gaps between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty two. I do want to simply note that national research has shown us that marginalized populations have been the most impacted by pandemic conditions and experienced the greatest amount of interrupted, of interrupted learning. And so I'd like to, to that end, talk about some of our next steps. We will continue to implement our Academic Recovery Plan, which includes the extension of the Instructional School Day for elementary schools by thirty minutes to provide additional time for schools to implement an intervention and an enrichment block. So we will be going into our second year, second year of that schedule. Our Summer Academic Recovery Academy continues so that we can strengthen literacy and math skills. We also deem it important to continue our implementation of our Universal Screener, NWEA MAP. Our focus will be to deepen teachers' and leaders' knowledge and understanding of their MAP data and the use of MAP data to plan and inform classroom instruction, which after we've completed this year, we've gone through our first full year of our Universal Screener with MAP. And we continue to support schools with the implementation of curriculum resources. So you heard me mention earlier the use of Amplify at our middle grades, foundations, Orton Gillingham, and my perspective. And of course, additionally, APS will continue to accelerate and deepen implementation of our APS Five, which are our five evidence-based practices that we will prioritize and implement in all of our APS schools to increase student outcomes and fulfill our equity commitments. All divisions across the district are committed to supporting our board goals. And part of this conversation allows us to think about what is it that we will need from the board to support this work? We anticipate the need for hosting community engagement sessions to build the capacity of our families and our communities' understanding of our overall academic strategy. We recognize how critical of a role that plays in parents being able to be a part of the process, understanding what it is that we're doing, having a sense of engagement relative to their child's performance, and a deeper understanding of what role they can play to help support this. And to ensure adequate resources to support our strategy, such as financial support for instructional materials, professional learning, additional technology tools, and human resources. So as a reminder, this level of sharing in this first engagement is very specifically our Goal One focused on literacy. My goal is to just have shared some level of what we believe is necessary from the board to be able to continue this work, but also to be able to engage in the conversations that I believe are important, that help us to take a little bit of a deeper dive into what we've seen to date and how we can continue to support success in the classroom and for our children.
Thank you so much, Dr. Heron. So let's go ahead and open it up for conversation and dialogue. Any initial questions, thoughts, or reaction? Katie?
Sure, I'll start. I'm so excited to be at this point today. Thank you, Dr. Heron.
Yes, ma'am.
Colleagues, I mean, this is exciting. This is the core of our work that's clearly focused on students. And I know we all have a lot of questions, so I will ask one right now. And looking at the data and you talking, Dr. Heron, about different strategies, and you reference the thirty minute and extra intervention block for elementary schools, wanting to better understand how we're measuring the impact of that time? I know it's still new, we're entering our second year, but how are we measuring to make sure that that is producing beneficial results for our students?
Yes, ma'am. And so first, it's important to identify what we utilize during that time period, particularly for intervention. And so we onboarded the use of or continued I-Read, System forty four, as well as Read one eighty and Math one eighty. The data that we are able to secure from the use of those platforms give us a sense of performance indicators for our students so that we can measure progress. And so in the question of how are we measuring impact? We utilize the data from those platforms to see how our students are moving. And we also utilize that to help streamline and identify the appropriate interventions that are needed for students across grade bands. I also need to name that our Universal Screener helps us in that same space. So our Universal Screener MAP, we utilize three times during the year, beginning of the year, the middle of the year, end of the year. Whereas with progress monitoring to that space to see how our students are moving towards proficiency, there's a dual dynamic around our ability to have data points for each individual child, what we see from their usage and their enrichment time, and also monitoring their progress as we see it from our screener with MAP.
That's very helpful. And going forward with progress monitoring, will we be able to see, I guess, more data around that from MAP directly correlated with the additional thirty minutes? Which I know there are other tools being used, but really looking at that, you know, piece, that one intervention piece?
Yes, ma'am. I understand the question. And so I, so a couple of, a couple of lifts or highlights to that. As our Universal Screener, that is perhaps even the most consistent as we do it across all grade bands. What we've been doing in this first year of implementation, we did look at with ACES as well as within schools, with principals and teachers, what we're seeing with our students and their level of growth. I think what's important to note is this was just the first year. And so to answer your question, we should anticipate some level of correlation as we continue to add on this protocol year by year with a balance of identification in terms of student performance. Engagement with schools, teacher, principal, teacher, parent. And then, of course, from an ACES standpoint, we do it across grade bands so that we at the central office can better identify how we provide more targeted supports.
Thank you, and appreciate you walking through how that's all implemented and the checks and knowing that we only know what we've done in the past for sure. And then, yeah, understanding how it will affect as we go forward. So that's my question for now. I may have more later.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, no, because no one can hear. Okay, that's right. That's great. Just a quick question on the summer ARA. When will we see data on what that looks like, right? And I think there was an increase in enrollment this year. What does that look like from a data perspective where we can be measuring success of that particular program?
We've had approximately nine thousand students participate in our Summer Academic Recovery Academy. But that was a timeline specific question I'm going to toss very quickly out relative to, let me make sure that I understood. When will we see the feedback from this summer? Or when will we see the feedback in comparison to this summer, past summer? Or that's kind of the same?
Those are both great. I'll take both of those.
I don't have the date or the timeline for that, so I'm going to toss to the team for that. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Sorry. Hello, thank you for that question. So of course, we've been collecting data since we started last year, the first year of ARA and the second year. And of course, we collect different forms of data. First, of course, the I-Ready that we use for all of our students in elementary and middle school. So we started looking at the comparative data from last year. And so of course, Dr. Heron talked about nine thousand students, and many of those students are not the same students. Sorry. Sorry, am I too loud? Forgive me. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. Thank you. And so we have that comparative data. We're working with our data team now to try to sift out all of the answers from our teachers and from our students from the data from I-Ready. So we should have that to share with Dr. Heron in the next coming weeks, and we'll be able to show you some of the comparative data from the first time students took it, the very first summer we offered it in twenty one, twenty two, I think it is. And then we have the data from this year, twenty two, twenty three. So we should have them in the coming days to kind of look at where our students started with pre and post assessments that we provided in I-Ready and in foundations.
Okay. Just ballpark, I can't recall the number. How many students did we have enrolled the first time?
I think it was about eleven thousand, Dr. Heron. I think that was our very first year, so we had a big push. And of course, this second year, we used the MAP data. So the first year, we didn't have the MAP data. We just used our twenty nineteen data from Milestones. So we were able to actually hone in on those specific students.
Okay, great.
But may I also add to that, making you a board member, Ms. Bracken? So the first year, whereas we were also open in that, that allowed for us to be more targeted. But even in us being targeted, it was still open to anyone who elected to participate.
Absolutely. And I'd also want to add for our middle grades, remember we had EdMentum, which is that program that we had for our middle school students. So we also will have that data from year one and year two also.
Okay, now that's great. Last, thank you very much. Next question is just high level board supports needed in the area of just looking at community engagement sessions to talk about, you know, what the strategy is throughout the school year. Just high level, what does that look like so we as board members can be thinking about that as, you know, we get underway for the school year?
So just candidly, I've been thoughtful about some of the things that we did this past year where we had community engagement. The academics team did have, they did host sessions. I think there's an opportunity for us to be more deliberate in pushing to the board access to our YouTube channel. We do have a YouTube channel that helps to give parents, whether they're able to physically be present or not, a deeper dive on what's happening. We believe that that's important. I would name also that when district meetings are held by board members, that's a share out. That's a share out that we are happy to provide information for parents on, whether it is our digital platform or something, or some tangible level of communication. I think that's a difference maker. In addition to that, to encourage and remind parents to connect back to the schoolhouse because we've also been very deliberate in that regard. Those are the first two things that are top of mind for me that I think board members can help us usher in and grow a broader audience as well.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Aretha?
So I would like to bring us back to looking at the data and what we saw. And I've got a couple of questions. One, you kind of, you touched on a little bit in when you said that Black, multiracial, and female saw the biggest declines. So my question there, one, was this consistent across the board regardless of cluster schooling grade? Or was it, did you find certain specifics where this was the case? And then the next part of that is, what are the major barriers do we think that are in place? What has been identified for barriers for literacy, third through eighth?
I may ask you to come back to the latter part of the questions, but let me just name very specifically some of the gaps we saw between student, between student groups. And so gaps exist between white subgroup and Black and Hispanic groups. That was a clear gap identified. Also, between all students and students with disabilities and ELL students. That was another space where we saw that. We will use MAP data to identify individual student learning needs so that we can provide the appropriate interventions. But that certainly was a space of concern in which we saw the disparity. And I think that's one part to the question that I might, if you don't mind, Board Vice Chairwoman, repeating, because I think there's a little bit more to that as well.
The next was about the barriers. So I believe you said you can use MAP to identify the need. Does that also then identify what is that challenge? Like what is the specifics that MAP is giving?
So MAP provides one area of identification there. And this is where I'd also defer back to some of the platforms that we've utilized. Not that we're solely codependent, but they're tailored uniquely to how our student is tracking. I think what I hear is, so how can you get specific to what Lisa's area of need and challenge is so that you can tailor an intervention for that? MAP gives us some level of growth, but then when we're able to look at how Lisa is performing, let's just use Read one eighty and see where there's challenge and there is a need for us to get more targeted. Teachers have that level of detailed information in front of them and can target accordingly if for some reason that level of resource is not available. That's where we also push in, we being the district level, to help support that. That's also tied to some of our other literacy ports with supports, excuse me, whether that's foundations or Orton Gillingham. It does allow for us to target very specifically where the challenges are in student performance. Did that answer the question?
It does a little bit. So in addition to those data points, which are definitely important, is there anything that we're using or qualitative that can get the, like, the whole child look?
So may I step back and capture something? I was referencing data points. I was referencing data points, and I should also reference performance, performance indicators. That's really what I, I would hone in on as to what you're speaking to. So MAP gives us some level of data relative to growth. But where are the performance challenges? Is it comprehension? Is it something with phonetically, with literacy, et cetera? That's where we're able to target that level of specificity by use of certain interventions that we have in place. That's not a screener, that's more detailed. I think that's the better answer to that, to not reference its data, but as a student performance indicator, where do the challenges lie with the varied specificity? Does that help? Yes, ma'am.
You go ahead.
So you mentioned a couple of different materials. And so I'm curious, what curriculum materials or best practices have been identified as growth drivers? And then conversely, have you seen some things that are just ineffective, right? So based on what we've seen for the wins, right? Is there a curriculum material or best practices that can be lifted? And then conversely, is there something that is like, you know what, that's not working, and we need to let it go?
So top of mind, best practices, why am I naming them as best practices, number one? Part of what I believe that helps account for best practices are level of teacher professional development at the onset. So that's fidelity of use. That helps us to have more of a best practice in terms of teacher knowledge and performance and monitoring. What comes to mind immediately is Orton Gillingham. That's a best practice, that's where we've seen a clear indication of performance, right? Foundations would be another, I think that's just as equally important. Letters, that helps us to have, that's a best practice. And the other part for me, Board Vice Chairwoman, is best practices also grounded in evidence-based, research-based practices that we can lean on to say, it's not a best practice just because we're doing it, but there's an opportunity for us to tap on what research has shown and what we see in student, the end goal, of course, student performance being elevated. So I hope it helps to kind of name a few. We've not had Amplify as long. So as I shared earlier, the middle grades, Amplify. This is our first full year of implementation, given the interruptions from the previous year where we weren't fully online. And so we'll have an opportunity to speak more about where we see more robust performance. But part of our onboarding, any of our interventions is always grounded in research-based, evidence-based best practices, how we take the time to train and onboard our teachers and then monitor fidelity of use. Another example, Read 180 or MAP, well, staying in English and Language Arts. Read 180 has historically been able to provide some level of indication to not only see growth, but to speak to, let's see, months of growth or years of growth for a student, for a scholar. But part of what makes it effective is fidelity of use. And so the number of hours, we call it dosages. So if dosage is low and we are not seeing a high level of performance, but there are inconsistencies there, that speaks to fidelity of implementation. It makes it harder to say it's a best practice, but that's part of why we're able to see it, a higher level of performance. Now, I'm saying this from past and present knowledge. When implemented with fidelity, when we can see consistency, we see a significant amount of growth. The data shows that, the student performance shows that. And oftentimes, when done well, we see students not only catching up to their grade level, still, I'm staying in the space of reading, but being able to move even further beyond. And that, I think, over time, there will be some stories that we can tell to that. When I say stories, narratives, some naming of students and schools who've had high level of implementation. And I look forward to us doing that, but our goal is for that to be across the board. I got a little caught up, so I don't know if I answered the question. I didn't defer, I just, that's just what I know for certain in terms of identifying best practices in this work. Yes, ma'am?
I'm going to go with that a little bit, just so I understand. So, because one of my questions was, you know, who's struggling most? And you touched that with, you know, some of the middle grades, with the fifth, sixth, and eighth. And you said that part of it was the implementation of the new curriculum in Amplify. And that that might be why we're seeing that decline, because it's new. What is the plan? How are we going to evaluate? Like, what's the cadence of evaluating that? Just, and, you know, at what point do we look at it and say, well, maybe that's not the thing? Or, just what's the timeline for looking at that?
Well, let me start with our timeline. When we first on-boarded our academic recovery efforts, we set from 2021 through 2024. We identified that as several years of our opportunity to monitor progress, to ensure fidelity of implementation, to be able to adjust as needed. That's one component. The other part of your question, Board Member Jones, is, and so how do we do some level of monitoring on it? This is Lisa's terminology, maybe on a monthly basis or biweekly, or what does that look like? And so that should be ongoing, and I see the team has come up to put, since I'll say this and then I'll toss. There are biweekly meetings that occur between teachers, principals. I've referenced ACES multiple times, of course, ACES is more of a summary evaluation. But it's robust feedback from principals. It is also the sharing of best practices from principals with principals in a space where we can adjust as needed. As it relates to a timeline, so at the end of the day, our end goal is always to see what does the student's performance look like? And are we of the belief that it has shown some significant improvement across the majority? We want to give it enough time. I don't want to falsely identify, and in three years, we will know. But what I will say is that as we're going into our third and fourth year, we should be able to provide the data that gives us a more confident response. I'm going to pause because I see both Ms. Brown and Dr. Florence, and invite them to tag team as appropriate.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. So, Board Member Jones, I just want to comment before Dr. Florence speaks a little bit more about the implementation of Amplify. Just to remind everyone that Amplify ELA was brought on board, I think, in the 2019, 2020 school year, when our middle school principals were given the opportunity and autonomy to be able to select an ELA curricular resource. And so all of the middle school principals got together and they identified Amplify ELA as the best choice curriculum for the needs of their student. Now, Amplify Mathematics was a part of our Gates Grant in order to improve mathematics instruction in APS. And so we paired those two together across middle schools. So we're excited that this is the very first year. And we recognize that the rollout was not the best that we would like to have seen, given the pandemic and given some of the interruptions that our students saw. So we are definitely going back to do a reset for Amplify to ensure that all teachers and principals clearly understand what Amplify is about and what type of teaching methods we want to make sure that teachers clearly understand and are comfortable with in order to provide our students with greater effectiveness in the classroom in mathematics. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Florence to speak more about our plan this year for making sure that we do a hard reset.
So a part of that reset included, this summer, spending time with specifically our new principals. We have several new middle school principals. So we wanted to make sure that we touched base with them very early on to ensure that they understood the program, understand the components, understand what they should see when they walk into classrooms every single day. We've also done a lot this year, beginning with teachers, with pre-planning a few weeks ago. And our approach this year is to work with them unit by unit. So at that first meeting, we sat down with all teachers, all middle school teachers, and said, the first unit, these are the goals, these are the objectives, these are the standards that you'll be teaching. Let's talk about what's happening from beginning to middle to end across that first unit. We'll stop at the end of the first unit and assess to see what students learned, what mastery took place, what didn't take place, how do we shift course moving throughout the course, throughout the rest of the school year? So really, our approach this year has been to work with individual schools on an individual basis to determine what that looks like for them to plan from the beginning of each unit, to implement the plan, to support NPLCs, to support with classroom visits and giving feedback, to ensure the implementation is happening at a high level throughout the course of the school year.
May I, oh, go ahead, go ahead, I'll come after.
And just to piggyback, Dr. Florence, I also want to say that we do recognize that many of our middle school teachers had a really hard time with Amplify. And so we know that they are struggling because they need to understand the new ways of teaching that we want to see in the English Language Arts and the mathematics classroom. But I also want to say that our end goal is to pull all of our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers out during the school year. If we can work out this calendar to sit down with them and make sure that they go unit by unit so that all sixth grade teachers in APS understand what's coming up for the unit, how to implement it effectively, and how to get support on a day-to-day basis.
Great, thank you.
Well, I was just reflective of some more of the thoughts to what we do as we're going into the school year. I didn't mention, I didn't hear mention, I was waiting to hear us name, our learning walks that also occur. The learning walks that we've been doing, I'm going back into last year that we will carry into this next year, are very powerful because that's a learning walk done with the principal, with members of the district staff, solely focused on what's happening in the classrooms. Here again, it is a healthy culture engagement, let's push into the classrooms, do observation, have healthy dialogue around what we see. Principals can identify where there is a greater need, and that provides us the opportunity to provide additional resources and support as needed. I think the learning walks matter, so I just wanted to identify that as well.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things, just sitting here, thinking, reflecting on the conversation about the data. And I know we have MAP that is given three times out the year to help with, I guess, we would say like the sub-level of progress.
Yes, ma'am.
And just understanding based on, I guess, just understanding from, based on this data from last year, MAP was new, it seems like we have a lot of new things that were in place last year. What were some of the, I guess, what was some of the strategies or what happened in the middle of the year? Or what occurred during the year for us to adjust, to address these concerns? So I know, and the reason I ask, I just hear the delay in understanding what our summer data, recovery data, really showed us, like, we don't have that. I don't know if, I don't know, was MAP, was results from MAP given at a time where it allowed recalibration, really allowed for the changes that needed to happen in our schools?
If I understand the question, I think I understand the question, Board Chairwoman. MAP gives us the ability to augment and adjust throughout the course of the year. If the question is, so what happens when you get that feedback on the level of progress students are making? Is there enough time for a teacher, a school, principal, et cetera, to shift at adjustments, provide greater interventions, move Lisa to a different, to a different level of engagement? Because MAP has given us an indicator of either progress, lack of progress, or acceleration, or high need. We do, we can do that during the school year, that certainly may vary by school. But that happens during the year for the student. Is that the, am I answering your question?
No, because my question is, what did that look like? So I'm more into like the action, action part of it. So when you receive the MAP result, what happened throughout the year?
Okay, I'm going to have, it looks like several folks want to speak to how that might look, a snapshot of what that looks like inside of the school, that's fine.
So I'll just say from a district level, we met with, when we meet with principals in monthly meetings, we take time to have them look at and analyze their data collectively. And then they use their school improvement plan to determine their next steps when they go back into their building. So we do that with the whole entire group as a principal group. Look at the data collectively, they look at their SIPs, determine their next steps, and how they plan to attack the data when they go back to their building. They did give it in March was the last one, so they did have time right before the actual assessment to take that data, use that data, and plan for how they plan to address instruction when they get back to their buildings. We did move the window back some, a little bit this year, so they will have even more time at the end of the year, with the end of the year, spring assessment, to plan and use that data before they actually get to do MAPS.
And just an additional point, we also use, because we do the spring MAP administration, the teachers who are teaching summer ARA, they have that data for students. And so that's how we place students in summer ARA this summer. And so it gives them an opportunity from March until we start in June. And June, for the full month of June, it gives them enough time to be able to look at that MAP data and plan out those units for Foundations, for EdMentum, and for all of our other curricular tools for the summer.
And so as a team of associate superintendents, the associates are going in on a bi-monthly basis to sit with principals in either 101 setting. We also do the walkthroughs where we take that MAP data and we're walking with principals to see in real time the actions and the shifts, Chairwoman Collins, that you're talking about. We're looking to see what that looks like in real time with the principals and their leadership teams. So in our one-on-ones, we're also sitting down one-on-one with the principal to deep, to dive deeper into the data by grade level and content area to talk about strategies that should be implemented in the SIPs, the continuous improvement plans that Dr. Florence mentioned as well. So between the O3s and the learning walks, we're keeping a close eye on the data and supporting the schools and their leadership teams.
O3s are one-on-ones.
They did know, I knew you were going to say that.
And just one more point, Board Member Collins, we also have, we've made sure that our schools with MAP data, we want to make sure this year that schools are able to individualize the support that we provide for MAP. So when we rolled it out this year, we did it full-scale for the district. But now we're able to hone in on each individual school, and principals are able to tell us, what do I need in my building for MAP? What do I need to better understand, and how do I need to support it in my school for my teachers?
Yeah, that was going to be my, like, that's, I mean, that, in essence, that was going to be my next question. What does that look like in the classroom? Because I hear district principal, district principal, district principal, like, how does that look?
Get more specific.
For the teacher who's telling you, I'm struggling with Amplify, or I'm struggling in this space. And so if a teacher is struggling, of course, our students are going to struggle. So just, so I think for me, just kind of understand, like, what does that, yeah, what does that strategy or resource, how does that drive the classroom?
Okay, so going back to Dr. Herring's comments about the walkthroughs, so we're able to collect qualitative and the quantitative data on the MAP side. And so once we see the level of implementation, as Tommy talked about, or the lack thereof, or the lack of understanding around how to effectively implement our programs for our kids, that's when the district office swings into action from the Teaching and Learning Department. And so we have specialists that you all have helped to fund through our reorganization last year to be able to provide more support and more hands on the ground for schools. So we have people that we deploy from the central office to be able to help coach teachers. We partner with the instructional coaches that are in each of our schools to make sure that we're building the capacity when we're not in the buildings to be able to help that individual teacher get it across to students and to support their ability to be able to implement at a high level.
And then the interim, on a day-to-day basis, I don't want us to forget the role that the instructional coaches play inside the school that pushes into the classroom, because that's really what I heard in the question from Board Chairwoman, to not so much just the district office, but in the brick and mortar, what does the teacher's support look like? Instructional coaches play a critical role in that. Because even with us deploying, until that occurs, there's still a level of support that happens inside the school. And I just wanted to name that as well, yeah.
Aretha, and then Tamara.
I think Dr. Smith wanted to say something, if that's all right.
Just one additional point that I wanted to go back, and Dr. Herring has already talked about the ACES process here. But that is also something that we've been thoughtful about scheduling in a way that is more appropriate to provide the time to respond to the things that we hear, whether it's action items, whether it's support. So there is a cyclical, continuous improvement process that happens there where there are the after-action reviews that are, again, a structure in place to get into each school building to respond to the differentiated needs of support, to just to take action. So I just wanted to name that.
So staying in the space of MAP?
Last one, there's a lot of support for schools. And so we also just wanted to mention the mid-year conferences that we have with our principals, their school teams, and their teachers as well around implementation of the resources against what the MAP data is telling us in terms of how our students are learning and progressing as well.
Okay, so staying in this space, in this space of support and education and understanding, how are we deepening our parental understanding of MAP? And how are parents being empowered to help the scholars at home?
So last year, we had our fall cluster meetings, family engagement meetings, and then we had a spring family engagement meetings by cluster. And so we took the time during those engagements to walk parents through the MAP assessment, what it is, what it does. We walked them through a family report, helped them to understand. Some of our parents held theirs up. This is what this score means, this is how you can support your child at home. So we do plan to continue those throughout the course of this school year. We also have worked with our family engagement office to provide our family engagement liaisons with support around MAP as well, since they are on the ground at the individual schools. They also have a level of knowledge that they can use to support parents within each individual school building.
And so I appreciate Dr. Florence for naming all of that, because that is absolutely correct. I also want to name, because I think of this often, is I also want to name, because I think of this often as well, and then we have the parent, we have diverse, what is it? Diversity and availability from parents, when they are best available, right? Diversity and availability, before school, after school, during the school day, best available in the evening. Just a few weeks ago, I, well, it wasn't a few weeks ago, it was last week, did the, with our Latino community, I did at 8:00 PM, our virtual Zoom so that I could get in front of our Hispanic community, because Wednesdays at 8:00 PM, that works. So that, and part of what I shared even then was, so because this happens every Wednesday and it is clearly on our radar, anticipate that we will start bringing to this group, that is now a community, information that helps inform parents. I'm only naming that to say, some of the things we've learned, and we're still learning, how to get that much more creative for engagement, because I think that's also what that question is grounded in. I didn't anticipate that either of them would name that, but I'm naming it because I know that that must remain on our radar. Also partnering with parent-focused organizations that can help get to parents that we don't always necessarily get to, but if our partners have the information, they are a messenger as well, and I know that that's a space of continued growth for us. So I wanted to name that in this conversation.
Okay, I have another question about the data, and this, you know, going along the what, you know, so what circumstances surrounding it. And so we talk about the COVID effect, right? And so that is a big impact, and, you know, it just was fortuitous that today, you know, Tai Tagami with ADAC, you put out a report that was talking about, you know, how different metro area districts did relative to the state, you know? And one of the grades they pulled out was third grade ELA in proficient and above. And so I thought, oh, that's really good, let's go look at it. And it's, it enables you to kind of get a ballpark picture when you go statewide, and they cautioned, you know, don't compare schools against other schools because you don't know participation rates and things like that, but that the overall state, you know, is, you know, it can, it can give you an order of magnitude about what the COVID effect was. And so in third grade ELA, we thought one, statewide, we saw a decline in about 5.3% in the proficient and above. So that puts ours in a little bit of perspective, you know? So we went down, you know, 6.6, you know? And so I guess one of my questions is, what can we learn, you know, from our, you know, third grade decline relative to the states? And what can we learn from Fulton County, for instance, in the same metric, had a very different outcome in third grade ELA? I mean, they actually went up, they outperformed the state, you know, by one and a quarter, 1.4%. So what can we learn from looking at that? And how do we go about, you know, taking some lessons from that, or investigating?
So I appreciate the question of, you know, what can we learn? And just, just a positive reflection to be thoughtful in that. So we know that since the pandemic and how we've all individually and collectively rebounded or returned back into our new normal, there were several indicators that impacted student learning upon return. And some of this might be redundant, Board Member Jones, but just top of mind for me around what could, what have we learned? I think that there are several ways of ensuring that our students have access to learning or supports or interventions at all times beyond an academic recovery. But we're really pushing into anywhere, anytime learning as a level of ensuring that students can, whether they are sitting in the classroom during a 30-minute intervention block or during the regular school day, that beyond that, there are opportunities for intervention. I think that's an important naming. You referenced the third grade, I think it's important that we take into consideration something that I think about often, our students who are now, well, now they're fourth graders, but last year's third graders, where they were first and second graders during a very complicated time, that these are the most vulnerable years and that there is an ongoing need for us to really hone in and monitor and track our level of support and intervention for that grade band until we see some level of performance improvement, specifically in this, in this conversation where we're referencing ELA or literacy. So the other thing that I think is also just as equally important, we had a high number, and we talked about this broadly, of parents who elected, particularly our first year during the pandemic, kindergarten or pre-K, to not have their children in school, to not do it virtually, if it were virtual. So there lies another opportunity for us to be thoughtful about how we assess, how we need to invest more in those specific grades to ensure that there is not, two to three years from now, some greater decline, but more of an opportunity to help accelerate or at least grow students' academic performance in the area. So based on the question, I know these are kind of just what comes to mind when I think about what we can learn. And the other thing that I would want to speak to is what I was naming earlier. What are our best practices for literacy intervention? And I named that they need to be research-based and evidence-based best practices. We talked about subgroup gaps, and so that there's still a level of cultural responsiveness as we look at what we provide in our curriculum to help accelerate and make it relevant for students, and to be very intentional and deliberate in that. So those are just the things, I feel like it might be a little, it's not random, it's very direct, but what can we learn is an open statement, and we're free to exchange in that.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I guess maybe the word learn is the wrong thing, might be, you know, you know, what can we investigate? Like how can we, yeah, how can we investigate, you know, something that we might glean from that data?
And so I think that that's also an opportunity to do a deeper dive on. So let's just take a comparison of districts, what were the practices that they found to be that much more impactful? We have, I'm gonna need the name of the group that can help us oftentimes do some level of independent research. Maple, I think it's, it came to me, I believe it's Maple. That's an opportunity for us to look at some comparison within our district and across districts to identify what were the interventions used? Where did we see accelerated progress, or did we see no growth whatsoever? That's a learning opportunity. When you said investigate, then that, that triggers the research, yes ma'am, that's right. So then that triggers the researcher in us, and to also do, be able to do some level of assessment in that regard.
I'll add one thing, you hit the nail on the head, Dr. Herring. Another monthly collaboration we have is between the State Department and Metro District. So there's an opportunity to engage in that conversation in these learning sessions, essentially, to compare where apples are apples, and it's not apples and oranges, but be able to dissect and understand best practice so that we can bring it back to, to our team to implement and execute as, as available.
Great, thank you. And I'm sorry I didn't clarify, use a better word, but it.
It was a good question, yeah.
That article as well. Yeah, I think that just kind of goes to just picking off, piggybacking off Tamara, sorry, Katie. You sure? Yeah, I was just, just sorry I won't lose the thought, just piggybacking off Tamara. Just, yeah, I think just kind of understanding what are the circumstances. I know we have the holistic data, but in regards to our subgroups as well, and what are the strategy, you know, what are those strategies and resources that we use, we use or may need to consider to really address the recessive data that's coming out of our subgroups? I really struggle with the fact that our, you know, our, you know, our black students are already the lowest performance subgroup in the district, and even further down as we look at the 2022 milestone scores. And so I just struggle with that, where we, where we are a large number predominantly African-American school system, that I really struggle with that. So just understanding those things, those strategies and resources, what worked and what didn't work, and what we need to be at a space of truly figuring out our next steps. And I know one of the strategies that you guys mentioned was personalized learning.
Absolutely.
But I just needed a more detailed vision of what that looks like versus just what we, what we know, what we, what we're launching it to be.
Yes, ma'am, and also moving beyond just the notion, although we applaud the notion of devices. So I was just, as you were talking, I don't mind being fully transparent, I jumped to some of my own notes at first glance. And this is from a few weeks ago, but one of the things that stood out to me immediately was, in Table 2, multiracial female and black students showed the highest gap between 2019, 2022. I just sat with that, and then followed up even with not only a question for me to reflect on, but even with the team, you know, so what do we do with the identification of that? How is it that, and I want to add a little bit more to this, since this is an engagement statement. When we were doing our ACEs review last year, I was able to start identifying and hearing trends from principals around student performances. They were just sharing out by subgroup where there were oftentimes high, high levels of growth or sometimes challenge, and this is not a math conversation, we'll come to that at the right time, but that stood out. But when we looked at gender, gender stood out. And then when this came, it was female students, and so there's some wanderings there. This is where we do need to have intentional conversation and review, that's on our radar. So I can't name something past practice, as this conversation really is grounded in how we're trying to move forward around, we speak to culturally relevant and responsive pedagogy, but I think grounded in that is, is there something we're not doing? Where our female students are not connecting, or we need to push in with more intentionality? And then similarly, multiracial and black students in the level of performance that we saw there, what might we consider to be other best practices? And that's where we partner as well, not just with our Center for Equity and Social Justice, but where we name curriculum, curriculum practices, training, teacher engagement, what does that look like in the classroom? How do we name and identify that that's top of mind for us when we're engaging with our students? So there are several, I think there's a, there are laundry lists of opportunities to think about where we see performance decline and where we can be more proactive. This is just my opportunity to name that that's absolutely on the radar.
Okay.
And thank you, that was, that was very helpful. Looking back at the data, because I was actually shifting to something else, and then I looked right back at the data. So I'm glad, Dr. Herring, you drew us back to it too, and Board Chair Collins. Gifted strikes me as well. And then looking at, or taking into consideration and asking you all this question, or Dr. Herring this question, the way gifted may be done differently in schools depending upon their signature program or what have you, like IB is pushed in versus children being pulled out. Just looking at the data around that, seeing that clearly something is working based on these numbers with gifted, and how is that provided to more students or used in a way that whatever's working here for gifted could potentially, I don't know, impact other children? I'm asking the question of you and other experts in this area, so.
Yes, ma'am. No, you know, it actually ties to a conversation that was shared earlier, just off, away from the dais, but best practice that I've seen, and this is an opportunity of growth for us. So on one hand, we know that when schools have, or when students have access to gifted-certified teachers, whether they are certificated or endorsed, they bring those inquiry-based skills into the classroom. So there are schools, there are schools in APS where all of the teachers are gifted-certified or endorsed. So what does that mean? That means I don't have to be identified as gifted, but the teacher in front of me is providing that same level of rigor that's happening in every classroom. I've done this long enough to know that's the best practice. That's the easiest answer to the question that you just put in front of us around that. We're not fully there yet. We do have opportunities for our teachers to be gifted, endorsed, and certificated, but do we have that in schools, in all schools? No, not yet, there lies an opportunity. Because I have also experienced that when that is the case, that's the difference maker, right? And so it's not so much tailoring it for a student who's had a level of identification, but we do not want students to, if they've had identification, to not receive services. But when you tailor it for all, you also start to then build a pipeline or a pathway along, along each advanced grade as they advance, where students start to become that much more high-performing. That's, that's my, I don't even want to elaborate on that, that, I mean, we can, but that's one of the better practices that I look forward to us trying to find our way to. We're not fully there, so I want to own that. But even when I walk schools, and I'm talking about our schools here in APS, but when I've walked schools just in my career, that's the practice that I've heard that was the game changer. If it's not that, beyond the endorsement, then it's also opening up access to classes and courses for students. And then to also be thoughtful about the diversity in those classrooms, so that that helps build some level of camaraderie. That's, that's a practice that we have to think through beyond the adult level and really push in to name how it can help our children from a learning standpoint, so, yes, ma'am.
I deeply appreciate all that, and I look forward to seeing how we monitor that development, but understanding, you know, this, this is all a process.
And it is a process, so.
All a process.
Yes, ma'am.
My other thing right now is, how can we help as a board, going back to the family engagement piece? I heard you all speak about family engagement and definitely getting them out in the community, greatly appreciated. There were two representatives at an event I went to this Saturday. How can we help get that information out to our families, particularly now that we're doing the progress monitoring? And maybe, you know, honing in on some intentional things we really want to make sure families know about right now, whether it be understanding MAP better? I'm gonna stop there, because this needs to be a question. I'm not suggesting anything, but how do we get that information and help?
Well, and again, I will name a little bit of what we shared earlier. So part of our opportunity is to make certain that we provide information to you as board members so that when you are hosting town halls, that that's readily available and accessible. And when we can be a presenter or an audience in that space, or help, help to inform an audience, certainly that's, that's our pleasure. I think also, the other piece, thank you, I see you coming Travis, come right on up, Mr. Norvell. The other piece is to help us know what you hear from the community. When you help me understand what you're hearing as a challenge, sometimes it is, well, parents simply didn't know it existed. Maybe we said everything but that thing. So then that helps us craft our message and our narrative better to meet the needs of our stakeholders. I would also name that. And Mr. Norvell, I saw you coming on up, so this is where I'll pause and toss to you.
No, thank you. One thing I was gonna mention is exactly what you said, what, you're the ears of the community, so it's letting us know what's working and what's not. And in addition to working with academics, our GO Team schedule this year is including intentional data points at each meeting, so meetings at a glance, which is a new process for us where they will look at MAP on this date, and they will look at this data point on this date. And so that'll be intentionally part of it, and that may also help what you hear from the community as it becomes a more focused part of GO Team meetings.
My only last thing on that is, yeah, just making sure our families know the resources available to them to support them in all of this, and understanding to the extent possible, if there is a community engagement plan that we could share out, certainly we'll be a partner in making sure we share information with you all and let you know when we're going out in the community. But if there's something I can even share with people to say, this is when you can find out more about all these resources that are available to you to help you support your child. So just asking, I guess, will there be such a thing as a community engagement strategy around that?
So I think that needs to then become, I don't want to try to answer just to give you an answer. So that's, obviously, we're deeply focused on how engagement should look, how do we tailor it? What does that plan look like? Let us continue to develop that work and have some time sensitivity to that. I think it's a similar commitment, but I don't want to suggest, I don't want to say, oh, we're working, I want to say, let us take that and own that and come back to that. That's, I think, the fairest and most honest, and I'll always want to give you the most honest answer. Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Aretha and, wait, just really quick, oh, Aretha and Tamara. Okay, so similar to the gifted numbers that saw a very little drop, we also see the student with disabilities number remain relatively flat. Granted, there's a lot of room for growth there, but it did remain relatively flat. Were there, what special efforts and resources were made to, above and beyond what may have gone to other students, to students with disabilities that may have gone to other students? kept them at that flat, right? Like, is there anything to learn from the fact that that number did not dip as much?
So before, I, I don't want to tap my toe on this one without, um, leaning to the, um, that's very specific, and I appreciate that question relative to our students with disabilities. And, uh, let me name what I, let me try to say what I heard that question, what, what do we believe kept it flat? Is that what I heard you ask? Yes, ma'am, okay.
Yes, yeah.
So, thank you for that question, board member. Baldwin, so one of the things we want to talk about is specialized instruction. So we, the special education lead teachers and special ed teachers work very closely, of course, to the IEPs. The specialized instruction was at the forefront of all instruction for all special ed students. And so as a part of that partnership, they were able to utilize a lot of the strategies that we've been, we've been implementing with our, is it Maryland? Maryland friends around the co-teaching model, so we implemented co-teaching across the district. And so again, that specialized instruction for special education students, that is a best practice. That is what we do with the IEP. And so our CELTS and our teachers make sure that our special population of students, that they really, really focused and honed in on the instruction, given, given all of the, um, interruptions that we had last year.
And I will say that before, um, those, the CELTS and lead teachers may not have been a part of our MAP training, or may not have been a part of our AMPLIFY training, or may not have been a part of those curricular pieces, um, intervention HMH. But this year, we have been very intentional about including them on all of those pieces whenever we're providing PL, so their support is in line with the support of the core classroom teacher.
And a part of our plan moving forward is to integrate some special education instruction into our tier one instruction for our general ed, general ed students. So currently in teaching and learning, we don't necessarily have that direct tie to special education because it sits under student services. But what we're planning to do is to integrate some lead teachers and some specialized instruction persons into the teaching and learning department for general ed, so that we can make sure that every decision that we're making, we are keeping our special populations of students, which is in our equity commitments, at the forefront of everything that we do.
So let me just speak to the power of what, um, Ms. Brown just shared, because that joint collaboration, particularly with our special education teachers and our, uh, general education teachers, that's, that, that is a better and, and, a better practice. So I appreciate, uh, that you named it, but I say that in that, um, it does then keep us all in the same area of, um, how do I want to say this? Uh, there's, there's a similar sense of, uh, understanding of what interventions are, what, how they provide some level of support, and even our special education teachers are able to provide best practices for general ed, uh, teachers as well. So just want to appreciate that, name that a little bit, um, in the space where we were not as intentionally then, yes.
And I just want to add that we are working closely with the Council of Great City Schools, who's been giving us lots of recommendations around special education, and so we'll be implementing those in a phase-out plan over the next couple of years, but that's really, really important as we look at other large city school districts and how they're working with their special ed populations.
Okay, and the last one before I toss it to you, Tamara, because I'm sure you're going to ans- ask the other ones I have, um, is kind of along those lines. So in our academic recovery time, how is that, if, if it is, being personalized to that individual student need versus an overall class or school need?
Go ahead. If it's personalized, as I, yeah.
So every, everything that we do is personalized, because every intervention tool that we use, the MAP assessments gives us individual data about each individual student. So a teacher can take that data and teach an individual or teach a small group that has similar areas of need. So everything we do is personalized or should be personalized in our schools, because we have the data that gives us individual information about each individual student in our classroom.
So I guess the question is, we, we talk about a lot of stuff at this level. Would I get the same answer in the classroom?
Yes, as far as small group instruction goes, as far as using data to inform instruction, from every principal in this building, every, every principal in this district, every teacher in this district would tell you the same thing about how they're using data to inform instruction.
The data in and of itself is targeted for each child. I think that's the other piece that I'm hearing you trying to convey, Dr. Florence.
Thank you, yes.
Well, Tom, Mr. Asher, did you want to say something?
And then the check-ins with the associate superintendent involves principals explaining how teachers are doing exactly what you're describing, Vice Chair Baldwin, right? Sitting with the associate superintendent, talking through your class data and how you are using that data from MAP. I think they call it a continuum of learning tool, how you're using that data to personalize learning for either individual students or groups of students within a class and across the grade level.
Dr. Henderson, Ross, or, yes, ma'am.
Y'all get to hear from everybody today. Um, so we have four attendants around personalized learning, reflection, and goal setting, that's one of them. So you work with your student to set goals for their learning. Of course, they're talking about the data, and all the data is very personalized. That part falls into our flexible path and pace, where students take what they're doing and they work towards mastery. So that's the training that our teachers are getting if they're part of this personalized learning implementation. In addition, you're taking that data and you're doing targeted instruction. That's the third tenant in personalized learning. So all these pieces are very connected. So we want to make sure our kids and our teachers really understand, this is my data point, this is my reflection and goal setting on this data point, this is the targeted instruction that I will receive through flexible tools that determine my path and my pace. So those are the parts of personalized learning that incorporate all that you're hearing today.
So that was in beta last year, but is being applied to everyone this year?
This year's 30 schools are on board, last year we had 14.
Okay.
So next year, we'll have everybody as part of those four components.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is real quick, because I know we have things to go on to and get to the community meeting by six o'clock. So, um, just want to, um, ask how we're making sure, um, in the spirit of investigation, right? So if you look at figure two, where it goes over the achievement levels by grade level, um, that is this year or this past year, and, you know, knowing how, um, you know, what could we learn by comparing it to the previous year? Because of the graph is specific to, like, the line graph is specific to proficient and above. And so what, you know, what can we learn about the, the beginning and the developing that, that might paint a bigger picture of what's going on there and what is needed? Um, I'll, yeah, I'll stop there. Did it grow? Did it shrink? You know, are we seeing more beginning learners and what, how does that relate, you know, to, just making sure we're open to, you know, other, that's not a question. What are we?
Figure two, yes.
Figure two, you know, what other data points help us inform, you know, our analysis of this? Like, you know, if we're looking at beginning learners, for instance, um, do we look at things like attendance or, you know, things like that? Like, are we not, I just don't want us to be.
Thank you.
You know, siloed. So that was just a question.
So, um, I appreciate, uh, that members of the pit crew came up, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, performance, performance, information technology. I'm gonna start, then I'm gonna toss. And so, uh, in my starting, I am thoughtful about, particularly because you referenced, so if you're not looking at figure two, you know, the beginning learners, red, yellow, green, um, as we've identified proficient or above, that's what we call high performing. What else can we look at? Yes, we must look at other at-risk factors or other factors that contribute to student performance, whether that is discipline data, whether that is attendance data, uh, whether that, uh, might be, uh, pass or fail, grades, actual grades beyond just the assessment, because some students may not do well on assessment, but their grades may not mirror that. What's going on there, that too is a, a factor. Uh, there is always a responsibility for us to do that. We're trying to build capacity for where platform of data like that exists. That's also been a part of the SOFTY work, but I do think it's important to name that this alone can't be that sole indicator for student performance, even if they're at the beginning level, because those other factors also help us identify other things, such as, is there something that requires greater, more intensive needs than just, um, what we might see through the assessment? In other words, should we be referring students over for other areas of concern for additional support? Out, so that was where I said I'd like to start with the answer to the question, yes, there's other, there are other data indicators, and I'll toss if you want to add to that.
Yes, I will, I will add right on to that, and then I'll let, um, Mr. Joseph Austin, our Executive Director of Data and Information, dive in as well. But all of those, almost all of those data points that Dr. Herring just mentioned, beyond these test scores, these are items that we look at and have conversations around in our ACEs reviews, everything. The attendance, the behavior, and we are still in the process of finalizing those for this school year, but something that we have been very specific about, uh, in alignment is ensuring that those metrics that we have conversations about are essentially a cascade of the conversations that we're having here, so that we are having that conversation about the alignment to the, the community's vision here, and then with the principals in those conversations, then they go back to the schools. We want to essentially create this cascade, so there is an alignment, understanding that it goes well beyond just these, um, these test scores that we have at the end of the school year. I'll also mention that, um, in future monitoring sessions, we'll be taking a deeper dive into our MAP assessment scores, because those, that is one of the metrics that we use for our progress measures. So we know we only have our milestone results in the spring once every year, so how are we going to know how we're doing throughout this year, right? So later in the calendar year, as we get into that piece of the monitoring, we coming back and saying, how, how are we progressing? And that's the metric that we can use to say, are, are we moving the needle? With that, I'll pass it to Mr. Austin to, uh, share a little more.
And with respect to your question about all that other data, our highly skilled, um, research and evaluation team led by Dr. Monique O'Brien, uh, her, um, her team has developed a student profile dashboard that utilizes not only, um, data such as MAP, attendance, behavior, grades. And so you can really look at, um, a variety of data, um, because a student is more than just a data point. And so that, those are tools that we do provide to the schools that are beautiful visualizations to really, um, make the data more digestible. And our team also goes out to schools in person to really provide that extra amount of support, um, to our schools. So really, our, our focus has been, you know, to support, um, the staff that are on the front lines, um, supporting our children. And in addition to that, um, the MAP data does provide that individual standards information. So for instance, a student may struggle with the algebra strand, but may, may need some enrichment in numbers and operations, so they're able to really adjust it at that granular level.
Thank you, that's good information.
I just want to add one additional data piece, and I think Board Member Collins talked about the whole child. We haven't mentioned, even though we're talking about ELA, we haven't mentioned our BAST3 Best, which is our universal screener for our mental and behavioral health. And so as we look at our students who are in the beginner or developing, proficient or distinguished, we also have to take a deep look at our mental and behavioral health, um, survey that we gave to all students, the parent information. All of that information is just as important as our MAP data. MAP, of course, is our performance data, but we also have good information on every single student and from the teacher from BAST3 Best, since I just wanted to mention that, and that is a key part of the conversation when we're sitting down, working with students and talking about the performance data from the perspective of ELA or any other content area.
As we're closing out, um, thank you for, for this, and we have had a really robust discussion about all of the dat- of, all the data in a ways that we're measuring progress. And so we want to close out with the last question for you, Dr. Herring. What do you need to continue to execute this goal? So we have BAST, MAP, milestones, this, that, that personalized learning, four tenants.
Yes.
All this good stuff. What do you, what, what do you need to fully execute this goal so we can see progress in this area?
It's a work in progress. We need time, um, but I want to name that in such a way that it doesn't suggest that we don't sit in a sense of urgency, right? So that's important, we're talking about children and performance. Um, I'm listening to our questions, and I'm thoughtful about some of the feedback that you all have given. So a couple of things I want to just name around what do we need, particularly from our board. So in the board meetings, oftentimes it's the superintendent, it's district level staff coming, we speak at the level to which we are on, boots on the ground, we talk about the supports we provide, but I hear a greater appetite to really know what's happening for as much as we can name it in the classroom and in the school by way of the teacher and the student. When parents come to you, please, um, also do not hesitate. We are very comfortable with board members directing parents to their principal. Principals are empowered to be able to speak to everything we've talked about today, uh, whether, um, it is our intervention, whether it's the MAP data that we've referenced, principals know that as well, and can also be, um, one of our greatest, if not the greatest ambassador around helping us to shape and communicate to parents this work and the role that they can play, because they also know their parent community as well. Um, and I think that's important to name also in a space where we've had administrative shift with principals, and so there's an opportunity for us to really help build those relationships while also, uh, giving some reassurance around the work. At what, several of our leadership meetings this summer, and I'm thinking about the last principal's meeting, because even in the way we introduced the question, I want to help us remember that although we've named different components of this, um, uh, conversation grounded in ELA that impacted, whether it's the different interventions that we utilize, whether it's the personalized learning, whether it's the screener, they all still fall in one of five categories, right? Data, uh, whole child intervention, curriculum and instruction, personalized learning, or signature programming. What I've conveyed is, it is not our intent to add on to things in the upcoming years. It is our intent to dive deeper, and I said this word earlier, so I want to come back to it, and implement with fidelity, and also to monitor that level of progress. That's important. So that it doesn't sound like there are all of these things, but they fall into one of these areas that are also measurable methods. That's important. So I'll come back to the five. Um, so even if it's data, and some of them overlap, and they should, uh, we just need for the board to feel that, that you have the confidence or the information that helps you convey that, so that there's also a message that can be given to our parents. So we redirect them to schools, and when there's a need for greater conversation or concerns, we can get those questions and help get them answered. And then we will provide all that we can to the board to help be frontline communicators to our stakeholders, because you represent, uh, constituents, and we want to be able to empower you with those tools. So the last thing that I will say that we need is if anything we provide doesn't give the impact, let us know what we can do more of, so that we can all be on, on the same page in that regard of communicating. Yes, ma'am.
Wow, so with that being said, looking forward to, um, this will be the consistent topic. Each goal would be different moving forward for our monthly board meetings agenda. Feel free to provide any feedback to us, particularly the community that's, um, with us today and also watching. And so with that, we thank you guys so much. I will now turn it back over to you, Dr. Herring, if this concludes today's work sessions.
Yes, ma'am. Um, this does conclude, Board Chair woman, our presentation and engagement, um, for today's, uh, work sess- for today's work session.
Great, thank you so much, and thank you everyone for your reports. Madam General Counsel, is there a need for the board to retreat into executive session?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, there is. The board needs to discuss legal and real estate matters.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to enter, to enter into executive se- executive session to discuss real estate and legal matters?
Yes, legal litigation matters.
Thank you, sorry about that.
So moved.
Yeah, it's been promptly moved by Vice Chair, uh, Aretha Baldwin.
Second.
Second by Board Member Jennifer McDonald. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now go into executive session. Thank you all so much.
Hello, I'm Nicole Lawson, the Atlanta Public Schools Chief Human Resource Officer, and I am honored to announce our new principals for the 2022-23 school year. We have 10 new principals in our elementary division. Principal Siobhan Mancy, Bolton Academy. Principal Dr. Enrique Rawls, Cleveland Avenue Elementary School. Principal Joy Anton, Deerwood Academy. Principal Dr. Tara Cotton, William Finch Elementary School. Principal Dr. Crystal January, Harper Archer Elementary School. Principal Dr. Crystal January, Harper Archer Elementary School. Principal Melissa St. Joy, Emma Hutchinson Elementary School. Principal Dr. Cantina Pruitt, Peyton Forrest Elementary School. Principal Dwight Hudson, Sarah Smith Elementary School. Principal Melanie Sithole, Tuskegee Airman Global Academy. Principal Dr. Tiffany Brown, William R. Hollis Innovation Academy, K8. We have six new principals in our middle grades division. Principal Kimberly Whitfield, Ralph J. Bunch Middle School. Principal Janet McDowell, David T. Howard Middle School. Principal Kimberly Gibbs, M.L. King Jr. Middle School. Principal Tonetta Green, Herman J. Russell, Weston Academy. Principal Dr. Dominique Merweather, Sutton Middle School. Principal Tekeisha Hollis, Sylvan Hills Middle School. We have four new principals in our high school division. Principal Kamisha Perry, Atlanta Virtual Academy. Principal Youssef Mohammed, Phoenix Academy. Principal Forestella Taylor, Frederick Douglas High School. Principal William Wade, Booker T. Washington High School. Congratulations to all of our new principals.
Hello, I'm Anita Williams, Atlanta Public Schools Chief of Schools. We begin each year here at APS with a singular goal. All Atlanta Public Schools students, parents, staff, and facilities are equipped and ready for teaching and learning to begin on the first day of school. After weeks of preparation, students, teachers, and staff all over Atlanta return to teaching and learning for Day One on Monday, August 1st. For many weeks, a cross-functional team within Atlanta Public Schools has been putting the wheels in motion across all of our departments and divisions. Thank you to each and every team member. We made it to Day One, and we are well into a successful 22-23 school year because of all of you. This year, we are excited to return to an in-person back-to-school bash. For the first time in two years, it was exciting to engage with thousands of our students, parents, and partners in preparation for the new school year, and to distribute backpacks filled with essential school supplies. A special thank you to our partners and volunteers, as none of this could have been done without them. I am thrilled to report that on Day One, every APS school received a visit of support from an associate, senior leader, or members of our administration. Superintendent Herring and members of the Atlanta Board of Education kicked off Day One with a pre-dawn visit to our Transportation Depot, then visited five schools to welcome back students, families, staff, and teachers. Throughout the week, the superintendent and members of the board visited a total of 20 schools across several clusters, making sure to include stops to welcome new APS principals. School visits will continue throughout the semester. Atlanta Public Schools continues to put safety of our students and families first. To that end, following an updated CDC guidance, the district will continue its COVID-19 prevention strategies, including COVID-19 testing, encouraging COVID-19 vaccination for students and staff, as well as cleaning and disinfecting high-traffic areas. Again this year, students will participate in universal screening for behavioral, mental health. This screening will support the identification of students in need of additional wraparound student supports. We want our students to know, you matter. The Every Student, Every Day Campaign represents a variety of incentive programs and re-engagement efforts to ensure every student is in school every day. Please be on the lookout for our activities and special programming to support this campaign throughout the school year. Atlanta Public Schools is hosting 56 pre-K classrooms at 36 school sites across the district. Listed here are the pre-K eligibility requirements for the 22-23 school year. Please review this list to determine your eligibility. To provide needed school-based academic support, the following intervention blocks will occur this school year. Elementary schools will have a 30-minute intervention block. Middle schools will have a 45-minute intervention block, and high schools will have a 90-minute intervention block for a minimum of four days per week. Despite the challenges of a pandemic and a competitive market, APS Human Resources successfully filled 20 principal vacancies and 99% of all teaching positions. The Human Resources team provided hiring incentives to 146 teachers hired to teach in high-need subject areas or at a turnaround school. Our Performance and Information Technology team has been busy ensuring our staff and students have the devices, technology, and tools they need for a successful school year. Their work included providing over 500 laptop devices to new staff members, installing 1,000 additional interactive LED panels in classrooms, processing over 300 requests for digital resources, and ensuring over 30,000 Chromebooks, iPad devices were repaired, sanitized, and staged for the start of the school year. To further support this work, we ask parents to return any previously issued devices to the student's school or the district's central office. Our Facilities team has been hard at work with capital improvements, renovations, and school moves this year. The Teen Elementary School has been temporarily moved to the East Lake facility while their existing building is being renovated. The Douglas High School Ninth Grade Steam Academy was established at the former Bain Facility, and the Atlanta Virtual Academy moved from Bethune to its permanent facility at the former Grove Park Building. The APS Center for Equity and Social Justice continues its work to further the district's commitment to equity through action. Significant work in preparation for this year includes launching two issues of the district's first-ever Equity Magazine, Equity at the Forefront, publishing the initial draft of the district's first-of-its-kind resource, the APS Strategic Equity Framework, and introducing it to 300 APS leaders at the Summer Leadership Retreat, partnering with the Office of Academics to prepare over 80 APS principals to lead sessions with their teams on cultivating culturally responsive practices in schools using the Leadership Academy's Portrait of a Culturally Responsive School Guide. Additionally, the CESJ facilitated training at the APS Summer Educators Conference, led professional learning on best practices for facilitating brave conversations in the workplace, briefed faith-based and community partners on state policy updates, and facilitated discussions on education-focused Georgia legislation. That concludes a brief overview of our Day One preparedness for the 22-23 school year. But we want to remind you about how to connect and engage with us this year. We are celebrating the 150th anniversary of the founding of Atlanta Public Schools all year long, and we invite you to visit atlantapublicschools.us/150 to learn more and watch for information on events and ways to tell your APS story. Finally, please remember, you can share your compliments, concerns, and questions via the Less Talk tab located on the APS website. And please consider following us on social media this year to stay current on news, announcements, and the many positive stories of student successes across the district.
What y'all are doing today is showing the love of Atlanta Public Schools on the people and kids of Atlanta. You're helping not just the youth, you're helping that mom and dad.
That's right.
That's trying to figure out how to have enough money for this month.
That's right.
That's the first part of the job of showing up. Got to be there. I'm going to be there every single day, and I hope that these kids, these teachers, these administrators, whatever you're doing, staff, APS, or the city of Atlanta, every day, show
Last Saturday before the first day of school, if you were a parent, you're like, woo-hoo! If you're a student, you're like, oh-ho! But either case, it's still exciting for us. The atmosphere here is electric. We are so excited to welcome back our families, our students especially, our APS scholars to the first day of school, which will be Monday, August 1st. But here in the, here at the Georgia World Congress Center, we have partners, we have politicians, we have families who are here to not only receive book supplies, but for us to love on them and prepare them to be well-resourced for the first days of school.
So this event brings all of our departments, all of our partners, all of our resources in one location where our families can see, introduce, and learn more about all the resources that we offer, and also ensure that our children are ready for Day One.
My name is Maria Paz. We are parents for a first grader, Clemente, on Morris Random School. This was a very nice experience. It's our second school bash from Atlanta Public Schools, and this year we were able to walk through all the representations and the community that working for students here in Atlanta Public Schools, and it was very resourceful, interesting to know all about different opportunities the kids have, and we are very happy also with the school bash that we got.
This is my first time attending an APS school bash, and I really enjoyed it. It was very energetic. It was nice gifts, nice supplies for the kids. I really enjoyed it. And then I liked seeing my daughter perform.
Yeah, I liked it. It was real fun. They had a lot of stuff you can get. Yeah, it was a fun, it was a nice experience.
And I liked that they're giving away book bags to the, you know what I mean? Because some people can't afford a book bag, so, you know what I mean? By them having book bags, they'll go to school and be ready to learn, man. But everything in there, man, is positive. It's helping us out in life, man, so we need it.
For those of you who chose to work in APS, because you saw the greatness of this organization, because you believe something about your journey and how it will propel you to your next, or because you believe that what we do for our children is the right thing to do, that's APS. Good morning. This is Dr. Lisa Herring, your very proud superintendent, ready for Day One. It is my honor to thank you, every single bus driver, every single member of transportation, and to all of our drivers. Please know you are valued, you are appreciated. We cannot do it without you. Have a great Day One. Let me say this with clarity and poise. I am extraordinarily proud of the presence, of the energy, of the love that has been clear in every single school that we've stepped foot in, whether it's been the teachers meeting our students with open arms, or the principals with hugs, or the parents with their own excitement about allowing us to have the opportunity to educate their scholars in this year. It's been outstanding. And to our scholars who are operating in school like they've been here already, although the summer has passed, it's very clear that they're glad to be back in school. I want to continue to commend APS. This is Day One. We're looking forward to many, many more as we go into this, our 150th year. APS, you're doing it. It's been an extraordinary Day One, and if this is a sign of days to come, I can't wait till tomorrow. And if this is a sign of days to come, I can't wait till tomorrow.
Are we ready?
Ready? Looking straight ahead.
One, two, three.
I was focusing on the new ISC, Instructional Service Center. But co-create with me if you will. It's an internal family joke, but co-create with me if you will. Because it's this new instructional service center, what we're going to create is an imagination services center. So imagination is welcome to live here. It's the innovation service center, because innovation is how we're going to do this work. It's the inspirational service center, because we will come here to make certain that all that we do... All right, I'm feeling that, right? That all that we do...
Oh my God, this is a fantastic space. We actually were able to come over here and do a cheap... The strategy team came over and had a training here prior to this grand opening. I didn't know it wasn't always like this. We were so happy. And we loved that colorful training room, because there were pink and green seats. Hint, hint.
So basically, what we've got here is a couple of our newest 3D printers set up as a 3D printing station. And this is designed for teachers to come and use the 3D printers they don't have at their schools, or if they're wanting to learn how to use 3D printers, or want to get some more time with them outside of their classroom experience that they can bring into their school, they can reserve time here to come and use these printers. And if they want training on these printers, or they want training on how to use 3D printers, or how to do 3D mechanical drafting, and then taking that to the printing phase, they can make an appointment with their educational technology specialist, and we can come over here and show them how to use this printer.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience and time. Our executive session went over just a little bit, but now has ended and will resume the regular meeting of the Atlanta Board of Education. Before we move on with our Milletage hearing number two and our community meeting, we have some guests here this evening for a few special recognitions. And with that, I'd like to invite my colleague, Board Member Tamara Jones, to present the first recognition.
Thank you, Board Chair Collins. So this month, we're going to be recognizing the Atlanta Council of PTAs. Under the leadership of the Georgia State PTA and Fulton PTA District 10, Atlanta Council of PTAs exists to support every APS parent, teacher, and child. Through its focus on local... Through its... I'm scared. Through its focus on local, state, and national grassroots leadership and development, the Atlanta Council of PTAs strives to empower parent voices through best practices PTA has put into advocacy action for nearly 125 years. This year, Atlanta Council will actively follow national PTA's most recent and much-needed research-based changes on how we build family and school relationships, creating a more open and equitable approach to APS child advocacy through the new four I's. Inclusive: questions and assumptions are to invite... Question assumptions and invite diverse perspectives to build more authentic, useful family and school relationships. Individualized: being responsive and personal, recognizing that each parent and school is different. Integrated: going beyond the one-off meeting or event to make our teachers a priority, and we are linking our mission to learning. Impactful: provide opportunities to interact across clusters, grow parent knowledge and skills, measure our success, and dig deep to share APS family voices with all stakeholders. These are big goals, so the Atlanta Council is sincerely grateful to Dr. Herring, our APS Family Engagement Team, and the Atlanta Board of Education for their support as we help re-energize and uplift each APS PTA in the coming school year. Together, we are every child, one voice. And I personally think that this is going to be a very key part of our engagement strategy to utilize, you know, the very existing experience structure of Atlanta PTA, Atlanta Council of PTAs, and I couldn't be honored more to recognize them this month. Please, please join me in recognizing Atlanta Council of PTAs.
We invite the Atlanta Council of PTAs up to the front for a photo.
We're doing?
Good evening, everyone. Here we go. Good evening, everyone. I am thrilled to say that Atlanta Public Schools has five bus drivers, two bus monitors, and one transportation staff member that met the elite driver qualifications during last school year. Tonight, I want to recognize the 2021-2022 APS Elite Personnel from our own mighty Transportation Department. I am so proud of these employees for their service and dedication to APS, to our schools, and of course, to our children. As a part of this recognition, I would like to thank our partners at Family First Credit Union for their support. Family First is a great supporter of Atlanta Public Schools. Thanks to their generosity, and let me be very specific, they are a great supporter of Atlanta Public Schools' transportation. Thanks to their generosity, each Elite Awardee is receiving a T-shirt, jacket, or shirt to celebrate their Elite Driver status, and will receive a food gift card and recognition of all that they do for APS and our scholars. So let's please give a round of applause for Family First Credit Union. Now, please allow me to tell you a little bit about our Elite Drivers. These personnel embody the Transportation Department's collective dedication to our students. These drivers, our drivers, deserve our undying appreciation for rising early each morning, coming to work, giving their all. And especially, I especially want to thank them for persevering through the pandemic. And as I always say, relative to our school bus drivers, whether it's been at the start of the school year, during training, or whatever opportunity I've had to be in front of them, I've always said that our school bus drivers represent the first face our children see in the mornings when they are boarding the buses and coming to school. To that end, please allow me to recognize our eight APS Elite, Ms. Janice Burt. Would you please come forward? Ms. Burt has 29 years of dedicated service, has 29 years of dedicated service to the students of Atlanta Public Schools as a school bus driver. School year 2021-22 marks her third consecutive year of attaining the honor of APS Elite. Her warranty Jackson Elementary and Sutton Middle School students in the North Atlanta Cluster appreciate her consistency and dedication. Let's give it up for Ms. Janice Burt. Mr. Trenton Dale, would you please come forward? Known as T-Dale, Mr. Dale has been employed with Atlanta Public Schools since November 1999 with 23 years of service. Mr. Dale serves the students of Brandon Elementary and North Atlanta High School. We celebrate Mr. Dale, because this is his fourth consecutive year of being an APS Elite School Bus Driver. As an aside, Mr. Dale is also a shining example of safe driving. He maintains the distinction of never having had an accident in his tenure as an APS School Bus Driver. And as a result, T-Dale, as we know him, has driven some 512,000 safe miles in his APS career without an at-fault accident. Ms. Patience G. Taylor, would you please come forward? Ms. Taylor is a 14-year veteran of the APS Transportation Department and serves the Douglas Cluster at FL Stanton Elementary School and CSK Best Academies. Ms. Taylor has also achieved Elite Status for three consecutive years. Let's give it up for Ms. Taylor. Mr. Wanda McGahey, would you please come forward? Ms. McGahey has been employed with APS as a school bus driver, serving students with special needs on specialized transportation for the past six years. She served students at Brandon Primary and CSK Best. This is her second consecutive year of obtaining Elite Status with APS. Ms. McGahey also has the distinction of being accident-free since 2016. Mr. Verlin Stargill, would you please come forward? Mr. Stargill is a five-time APS Elite Honoree since the inception of this program in 2017. He has achieved this status each year. He proudly transports students from the Midtown Cluster at Springdale Park Elementary, MLK Middle School, and often covers at Maynard Jackson High School. We also want to point out that he has made it to work for the last 1,005 workdays without missing a day or a shift. Well done, well done, well done. Mr. Dexter Jenkins, would you please come forward? Mr. Jenkins is in his third year as a school bus monitor, and this is his first time being honored as APS Elite for having perfect attendance. Mr. Jenkins is a special needs bus monitor at Burgess Peterson Academy. Ms. Latasha Cotton, would you please come forward? Ms. Cotton is a 21-year veteran with Atlanta Public Schools Transportation Department as a bus monitor. She supports Tharrel and Bunche Schools, and we appreciate the hard work and service. She's dedicated to the children of APS. And finally, Ms. Monica Jax, would you please come forward? Ms. Jax has been with APS since 2020 as a payroll clerk. This is her second year of having perfect attendance and receiving recognition for being APS Elite. Everyone in this room, would you please join me and our board, and let's stand and give the APS Elite Team the honor and recognition that they so deserve?
Oh, that was great. Congratulations again, and thank you, guys, for all you do for APS and our kids. At this time, we are prepared to hold our second public hearing on the proposed Milletage partial rollback. Do I have a motion to begin the Milletage hearing, the second Milletage hearing? A second. It's been properly moved by Jason Estaves and seconded by Oretta Walden. May we go ahead and proceed?
Good evening and welcome to the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. In just a few moments, the board will begin hearing from those who signed up to speak by 5:50 PM. The board welcomes your comments, but before we get started, please take note of the following guidelines on how public comment is conducted. The board has allocated one hour for public comment, and each speaker will only be allowed to speak once for a total of two minutes. The board may elect to hear community comments in any order or sequence, and is not limited by the order of the sign-up sheets. All speakers presenting highly detailed information are asked to put their comments in writing, and comment cards are available for those wishing to do so. In order to maintain meeting decorum, follow appropriate protocols, protect the confidentiality of students, and ensure impartiality, the board will not hear comments on matters involving individual students, parents, or the character professional competency, or the physical or mental health of any individual. Also, the board will not hear public comment on personnel matters that specify... that specifically include the names or titles of employees. This includes, but is not limited to, contract non-renewals, position abolishment, the hiring or firing of staff, and investigative proceedings regarding allegations of misconduct. Comments regarding personnel issues should be sent in writing to Atlanta Board of Education, 130 Trinity Avenue, Southwest, Atlanta, Georgia 30303, or via email at boardcomments@atlantapublicschools.us. Finally, in order to maintain meeting decorum and ensure all comments can be heard by the board, applause, cheering, jeering, or speech that defames individuals or disrupts the meeting should be refrained from, and may be cause for removal, adjournment of the meeting, and/or suspension from attending future Atlanta Board of Education events, hearings, meetings, and other proceedings. With that being said, I would like to call our first speaker, Brother Anthony Mohammed, for two minutes, followed by Glenn Wrightson. Glenn Wrightson, if you will make your way up to the front so that we can move expeditiously, would be greatly appreciated.
My apologies, Mr. Gaither. Part of the script did not have the call for the presentation by Lisa Bracken. And so I want to, for the public that was not able to join us at 10:00 a.m. today and need to understand that we'll be requesting a partial millage rollback. Mr. Mohammed, do you mind if we go, if we do a quick presentation for the community to understand what we're having the hearing for today? It'll only take us a few minutes, and then we'll proceed with your public comment. Is that okay, sir?
I'd just like to make my comments.
I'm sorry, sir?
I'd like to make my comments.
Yeah, you want to go ahead and do your comment now?
My name is Brother Anthony Mohammed as well.
So what we'll do, Mr. Mohammed, just give me one second. We'll let you proceed with your comment, and if we can pause, let Lisa Bracken make the presentation for the public, and then we'll proceed with the second comment. Is that okay?
I mean, if you're gonna ask me, and I answered you that I wanted to make my comments.
Absolutely, and you can do that now.
I am Brother Anthony Mohammed. I'm a spiritual, soulful man. I'm studying the ancient ancestors here in North America. We used to know this land as indigenous people. There were dark people like me, perhaps Aboriginal people in the continent. There are original people. I have a problem with this money that you usually take for the last 30 years that I put forth in my home that I purchased in the Bean Hill area. I was here with Dr. Krim. I was here with Dr. Hall. We started something called African Fusion, but it was only beneficial to the top 10% that want to manage the interest of that education curriculum, but that did not want to carry it forward for the benefit of the least of them. Dark peoples in America that look like me, about 45 million, the top 10% control about 75% of all our own income that we as aggregate people generate in North America. But we don't use it to try to help the education for our lower people that are not at the top 10%. And then the influence that you do, don't even want to recognize your ancient ancestry contribution to civilization. We are a holistic people. We're not a people that just generate interest from the left side of our brain. We have a real want to be righteous and just, but this patriarchal society reject the woman. I studied how to connect ourselves back to the woman. Dark matter. The universe is dark. So I ask you, why is it that you could continue to take my resources, won't let our children to be taught history? You got a critical race theory going on, but you don't want to call it critical facts. It's truth that we need to tell our children and Caucasian children?
Thank you so much. You've reached a time boundary. Thank you.
May I mention, hold up, I say, let me make them, Ashay, Ashay, Ashay.
Now, we will have our Chief Announcer Officer Lisa Bracken to make the presentation for the millage rollback. Thank you so much, Ms. Bracken.
Sure thing. So I cannot advance the slides, but if you can go to Slide 2 for me. Thank you. So basically, just an overview of the millage recommendation for today. The Fulton County Tax Digest is up approximately 7.5%. Decab Digest about, up about 13% due to additional growth and development and increases in property values. Based on these assumptions, the digest would exceed our budgeted revenue for FY 2023 by approximately $11 million. A full rollback to 19.522 would mean a decrease to the FY 2023 budget of $31 million. So we are recommending a partial rollback from 20.740 mils to 20.5 mils. We are holding three public hearings on this millage partial rollback. The first was this morning at 10:00 a.m. The second is occurring at this time. Our final hearing is scheduled for 10:00 a.m. on August 15th, and at that point in time, the board will take action to adopt the millage rate. I can take any questions you might have.
One question, just for clarity. Can you clarify that the advertisement will state an 5.01 increase, but is not an increase that is happening? Can you just clarify that for the public?
That's correct. So overall, the value of the digest is increasing. And so even as we are setting, decreasing our millage rate, that millage rate is being applied to a digest that is overall increased because of growth, development, and reassessments in property values. And so what we have to advertise by law, we have to use very strict language. We have to advertise a tax increase of 5% mostly because of those value increases. However, the rollback rate of 20.5 from 20.740 will return tax revenue back to tax owners.
Right. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll now proceed with the second speaker for tonight's millage hearing.
Glenn Wrightson, for two minutes.
Glenn Wrightson, longtime Atlanta resident. It sounds like the rollback, the partial rollback is about 25%, so it would still be a 4%. It sounds like it would still be a 4% increase. I want to discourage that there be any increase, so the rollback should be greater. I think the system has gotten top-heavy. We're paying the administrator $400,000 a year that didn't pass the teacher's exam. We're setting up these committees to teach some sort of a, something about equity education. Equity is not, is being misconstrued. It's not what you think you deserve. It's what you contribute, what you put into something. We need to teach civics. I see people throwing trash and not around and not putting trash in the trash containers. We need to teach civics in the schools, and we need to teach grammar. I don't hear students using proper verb tenses any longer. I hear a lot of "like" and "can you see what I'm saying?" And it's not, we're not educating these students. I don't think it's right to increase the money when we're not using the money. We've already got property. This, this system of property tax and the assessment and the tax office and setting the rate, it leaves the taxpayer in a bind. Nobody's taking responsibility. They say, "Oh, well, we didn't set the rate. We just do the assessment." And then, "We didn't set the assessment. We just charged the rate." But it's borderline extortion. When the taxpayer can't pay the tax bill, you sell the houses, the dwelling is sold on the courthouse steps.
Madam Chair, this concludes the millage hearing.
Great. Thank you so much. Seeing that there are no more speakers, this now concludes the second public hearing on the proposed millage, millage partial rollback. Thank you, community members, for taking the time to speak with us, and we always appreciate your feedback and your engagement with us. And now let's proceed to the community meeting. Understanding that the same guidelines apply, Mr. Gaither, please proceed with calling speakers for public comment.
Our first speaker will be Jonathan Love, followed by Hamida Embry. Ms. Embry, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated. Mr. Love, you have two minutes. Mr. Love, can you hear us? Mr. Love, can you hear us? Mr. Love, if you can hear us, you have to unmute. Star 9, star 6. All right, we'll cut, oh, there we go.
Help, help. Sorry, can you hear me?
You're fine. Yes, we can. You have two minutes.
Sorry, I was putting my kids to bed. So my understanding is that the purpose of the facility's master plan is to essentially make decisions that will create an equitable, high-quality learning environment for students in and across clusters and communities, and hopefully is one that can be made and sustained for several years to avoid unnecessary disruption. As you apply that to the new Inman Elementary School proposed, given that, one, all of the community engagement from the live discussions, from the surveys, from the in-person meetings, the community has been overwhelmingly of the belief that it will not create an equitable or high-quality learning environment, and, two, that the current Springdale Park PTO is heavily against the proposal. And, three, all the analysis of the data that the architects put together in making the decision is deeply flawed. Why is this vote taking place today?
Are you, are you done, Mr. Love?
I am. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Embry. You have two minutes.
Greetings, members of the board and staff. I come as one, and I stand as many. I am Hamida Embry, the Executive Director of AFSMI Georgia Local 1644, but more important, I am a mother of a second grader. We often sound like a broken record when talking about our food service options. We have the same script, different players. If this issue is not resolved soon, we will be back before your body next month. And in the meantime, I'll be reaching out to the board members to have a meeting with you all to discuss the issues that are happening in the Nutrition Department. Equally pressing is an emerging scandal within our transportation operations. This board authorized the hiring of the vendor First Student that has unqualified people operating our buses and drivers who have failed to complete the required background investigation. In truth, we really don't know who's driving our students. In an effort to address or cover up this issue, we have real APS bus operators sitting on the bus, babysitting contracted drivers. So you have two drivers on one bus. This does not make good business sense, nor does it make good common sense. First student had their first accident last week. Let's catch this snowball at the top of the hill. And I want to shout out our very own elite bus operators, monitors, and staff within the Transportation Department. We have the individuals who love the children in this district dearly, and we need to keep our transportation services in-house. Again, I'll be reaching out to your offices soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ben Chastain, for two minutes, followed by Crystal Jeffrey. Ms. Jeffrey, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated. Mr. Chastain, you have two minutes.
Hello, thank you so much, and good evening to everyone. I apologize for not being able to attend in person this evening. I'd like to make three points with regard to the proposal to create a new K-35 school at the Inman campus rather than instituting a Spark dual campus. The first point is regarding the engagement that APS purportedly made leading up to this decision and the announcement. I forwarded to Michelle copies of emails I sent to various APS administration officials outlining the fact that the focus groups that was held, that I attended, was an act of APS not engaging with us, not listening to our ideas or concerns or comments, but simply arguing with us and telling us that we were wrong. I notified the APS administration of this, as well as notifying Dr. Herring directly herself, and received no responses from anyone in the APS administration to those notifications, and therefore, the representation that the administration has made to the board that the engagement happened is an incorrect one. Also, with regard to the data that we're relying on here, new updated data shows that the current student bodies of the various elementary schools will fit just fine in those schools for years to come. Based on that, I don't understand why we're making this decision now. We have other decisions to think. Also, note that the survey data that APS relies on in its presentation was a head count of somewhere in the range of 450 to 500 people. They're making their decisions based on that, yet our petition in opposition to the, to the idea had over 1,100 people in favor of a dual campus rather than the proposed school. Finally, when you think about equity and fairness of all the children involved here, think about the current students enrolled rather than the new students who have not been disrupted, have not been pulled out of their classrooms, have not had their learning disrupted by COVID, and hopefully never will. Treat our students the same as you're hoping to treat those students in the long run, and give our students the continuity and stability that they deserve after already being disrupted multiple times over the last few years, as opposed to students who have not yet entered the system and might have to make one change at school should this be?
Thank you. We reached a time boundary. And again, for those who still have comments, please feel free to submit those comments in writing using the Let's Talk platform, or you can send it via email so that we can make sure that the board and administration is aware. Our next speaker is Crystal Jeffrey, for two minutes, followed by Laquita Peters. Ms. Peters, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Good evening, members of the board and staff. I am Crystal Jeffrey, Secretary Treasurer of AFSMI Georgia, and most importantly, a mother of a high schooler in kindergarten. I know that building a solid foundation starts from the bottom up, and APS' foundation is crumbling, and the board has failed to take action. For the first time in the last 12 years of our food service, food service workers are working without a contract. The benefit of a contract, our APS staff has one, administrators and teachers, they all work with the benefit of the contract. We had a contract with Sedesco. We had a contract with Aramark. SFE has a contract with APS, yet those that work in the cafeteria are currently working without the dignity of a contract. As we open the school year, our Nutrition Department is understaffed, yet the workload continues to be high, which means those that are actually working bear the burden of all that has to be done. In the end, it is not just about the staff that suffers. Ultimately, it's our students. Since being granted this contract by the board in 2019, SFE has changed their CEO, general managers, director of operations, human resource directors, and numerous other positions. The only consistent thing about SFE in the last three years is their name. APS must evaluate its relationship with SFE as well as the APS-SFE contract to ensure servicing levels, benchmarks, and staffing requirements are being met. I want to give a special shout-out to our AFSMI members on being Elite Bus Drivers. Their patience, dedications, determinations have got them to far, this far, and they are the bread and butter. I want a special shout-out Patience Taylor, Janice Burt, Towanda McGee, Trenton Dale, and Latasha Cotton. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laquita Peters, followed by Jason Holmes. Mr. Holmes, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated. Ms. Peters, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. It is a sad day in school nutrition. At Atlanta Public Schools, the staff is overworked and underpaid. It's like preparing Thanksgiving dinner. Everybody know how hectic Thanksgiving dinner is when you're preparing it for the whole family. And just imagine preparing Thanksgiving dinner and then not being able to go to the grocery store. The kitchens are understaffed, overworked, and underpaid. This is the first time in 20 years I have ever worked with no contract. And employees are resigning, even managers by email. Let me be very clear. Atlanta Public School has a shortage problem. Shortage of respect, trust, staff, commitment, food, wages, uniform, and a shortage of dignity. Meaning a shortage of, let me say it with you. Quantity of demand is greater than the quantity supplied to get the job done. We must do better, and it's up to everyone sitting on this panel to make the right choices to make it better. Also, at this time, I would like to shout out to the Transportation Department and the Elite Drivers and all those who work diligently in the Transportation Department. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to remind the audience that there is no cheering or jeering so that we can make sure that we hear all of the comments that are being made by stakeholders. Our next speaker is Jason Holmes, for two minutes, followed by Yolanda Jackson. Our next speaker is Jason Holmes for two minutes, followed by Yolanda Jackson. Ms. Jackson, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated. Mr. Holmes, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I am the Springdale Park PTO president for the 2022-23 school year. On Wednesday, July 20th, we held a PTO general membership meeting to discuss and vote on a resolution that states that our community is against the rezoning of 2/3 of current Springdale Park students to move out of the Spark attended zone as the Inman-K5 proposal does. It further states that the PTO formally rejects the current APS plan and asks for the board to vote no whether to move forward with the current plan. To counter the mischaracterization that Mr. Norvell stated earlier regarding this resolution, the core tenet of the resolution was not concern with grandfathering, but rather concern with the academic, social, and emotional impact this plan will have on thousands of cluster students who have just experienced unprecedented disruption and COVID learning loss, and instead of prioritizing these concerns, the plan prioritizes secondary concerns like walkability. To the extent grandfathering is even addressed in the resolution, it is primarily to point out that the requirement for students to provide their own transportation in order to take advantage of this policy is inherently inequitable, a common theme through the process that equity concerns are minimized or not addressed. When this resolution was put forward for a general member vote, it passed by an overwhelming margin of 117, 4 and 7 against. If you previously believed that the passion you heard from a handful of our Spark parents against the Inman-K5 option was isolated, this should remove all doubt that the current plan is broadly unpopular with the Springdale Park community, and moving forward with this plan would be a near-unanimous rebuke against the preferences of the Spark community. We are asking the board to use this as yet another piece of feedback to reinforce that we believe you should vote no on the current proposal if you are truly listening to the stakeholders of Spark and others in the Midtown Cluster. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Yolanda Jackson, followed by Amy Harward. If you'll make your way up to the front, that'd be greatly appreciated. Ms. Jackson, you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Yolanda Jackson. I'm asking the board to bring APS back into the nutrition department and stop contracting. Kids when APS had the nutrition department, kids ate. Now with these contractors coming in, they not eating because they eating the same thing over and over, but on a different day. And also, I'm asking, I have two grandkids at APS, and my middle school grandbaby called me last week. He's saying their buses overcrowded, they standing up on their buses, the bus driver making the boys get on the bus last because he's saying they not being polite to the girls. But it doesn't matter who gets on the bus first because they standing up, and it's not safe for kids to be standing up on the bus. The second thing is, on Friday morning, they was getting ready to go to school, he made all the boys stay out on the sidewalk, let the girls in. So it was a young girl running late. Kids still getting on the bus. He pulled off while the kids were stepping on the bus, so some kids got hurt. So, we need to look into transportation, how they transporting these kids to school because overcrowding buses, somebody can get hurt. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Amy Harward, followed by Alicia Cardillo. Ms. Cardillo, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
I've been really struggling about what I want to say today. When I began this process, I thought for sure two things would be true. I thought whatever APS proposed, you all would prioritize the academic success of these kids, the emotional health of these kids that have already experienced so much COVID trauma. And number two, I thought you all would rely on expertise and partner with us as parents and educators, and unfortunately, sadly, I no longer believe either of these things to be true. Dr. Herring, last week on NPR, you talked about the COVID trauma that these kids have endured, and I was really grateful to hear you say that. But if you can create a proposal like this that disrupts three entire elementary schools next year, I question how much you all really know what's happening in classrooms, the effects of COVID trauma that these educators are seeing, and what these kids are actually experiencing and feeling. This proposal acts as if COVID never happened. Comparing this to opening Spark presupposes that we're in normal times, saying things like, which we've heard a lot, "Your kids will be fine," or "Time's up, we've been working on this for a long time already," sound like things adults say when they're making decisions that are convenient for adults. But after three grades of these kids enduring COVID instability, and if the milestone scores show us anything, it's that these kids and these learning gaps will not be made up unless we can work together and make decisions that won't disrupt them. And board members, I am so baffled by how little due diligence you've required of APS to feel comfortable making a decision this big. I thought you all were supposed to be a check and balance for our kids, not just a rubber stamp. What expertise are you relying on to make this decision? Why haven't you asked for equity studies? Why haven't you asked for an academic study? Why aren't you asking for emotional studies? When was the last time you all were in a classroom, not for ribbon cuttings, but to actually talk to educators that are in there educating these kids? Please demand more for our kids, for our current APS kids. Exert your independence, and please vote no. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Cardillo, followed by Michael Langford. Mr. Langford, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Hi, board members. In the June board meeting, my name is Alicia Cardillo. I'm a second-grade Spark parent and a Kinder Spark parent. We were promised engagement over the summer and creating the grandfathering plan. To date, there have been no summer sessions regarding building a grandfathering plan. More than anything, we seek above all stability for our COVID-traumated kids, and most specifically, I represent the cohort of families whose kinders got their Kinder cut off and spent first grade being virtual, second grade finally back in person. And so, in order for me to prevent inflicting further trauma on this now rising fourth-grader for next year, I have to choose to grandfather her without any guarantee that the sibling can go with her. So as a family member, I have to choose two separate schools, two separate schedules, no ability to transport the older one to the school. And so, in order for me to choose stability, I'm willing to do this, but what upsets me the most is that we were promised engagement, and we did not get it. This may not have been the plan that would have come if I had actually had a chance, you know, an opportunity to voice my preference and my cohort's preference into building this plan. So I am here appealing to my elected officials to hold the APS administration accountable. Ask the hard questions. Ask for the promises. Where are the deliveries of those promises? We engaged with Michelle Olympiades in her meeting last week and asked Michelle if she knew of any engagement sessions over the summer, and she confirmed she had no knowledge. I'm not making this up. There were no sessions. So how can they present a grandfathering plan with a promise of community engagement if there was no community engagement? Please vote no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Langford, followed by Shannon Guezero. Ms. Guezero, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Hello, board. Hello, Superintendent Dr. Herring. There's an old adage among lawyers that says, "If you have the facts on your side, pound the facts. If you have the law on your side, pound the law. If you have neither the facts nor the law on your side, pound the table." I would like to say, I believe most of the discomfort the board has felt in the last week has actually been because APS did have some facts on its side, but it instead resorted to the equivalent of pounding on the table, or maybe pounding on the law in a couple places. There were a lot of places where healing was happening and things were changing, and you guys really could have gotten a fast-healed resolution to this on many factors. But instead, a lot of message discipline and locking down things happened, and data was not shared that was probably legally required to be shared, and that ended up causing a lot of mistrust. It ended up causing a lot of work on a lot of people's things, and it caused a lot of information coming to the board independently that could have come through more official channels if people trusted those channels, would not be actual skilled politicians and massage it and change the message and stuff like that. I actually wish our national politicians had the skill that APS does in this. It's really actually quite flooring to see how well it's done. Actually, I've actually been surprised how well APS does most things. It, like pleasantly surprised, including this message discipline thing, which would be great for something that I agreed with, but for something I disagree with, it probably is pretty bad. Anyhow, if the board wants less contact for the future rezonings, please have independent things to get you information, independent committees, independent school boards, anything. And APS, I do think there's still some things going on here that's going to plague other schools, and I would love to try to address them with you, and I do hope you take this in the vein of respect and feedback and, you know, help work to get this fixed.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Guezero. You have two minutes, followed by Brother Anthony Muhammad. If you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated. Brother Muhammad, do you want to speak again? In the public comment, you signed up for both. So I guess that's a yes. So if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Hi, my name is Shannon. I'm actually going to turn and speak to the caregivers in the room because frankly, I'm tired of trying to talk to this board and administration when they've made it abundantly clear that parent voices do not impact their decision-making. By attending board meetings the past two years I've been an APS parent, I've learned parents, teachers, and staff are without a doubt the expert of our communities. Yet we are systematically dismissed or ignored by this board, Dr. Herring and her team. Thomasville Heights parents knew families would be left at Forest Cove Apartments but were ignored. Tumor parents know that their school needs a full expansion but are being ignored. Midtown Cluster elementary parents know we're being fed false or incomplete data, but we've been ignored. Those of us closest to the strengths and challenges of our communities are dismissed over capacity consulting groups or district employees, and it's unacceptable. Caregivers, let's hold this board and administrative accountable. We are so lucky to have organizations in the house tonight like Atlanta Thrive and Equity and Education, parent advocacy groups that can convene us across clusters and define our version of community engagement. This board and this administration should not get to check a community engagement box. We, the community, say when they've done their job sufficiently, and they have not. I know the issues facing our communities across our district are vastly different, but I want to build together as parents, caregivers, and stakeholders, and make sure every community has a voice that is both heard and respected in this system. Please reach out to Atlanta Thrive, Kimberly Dukes, kdukes@atlantathrive.org. I know I am. All power to the community.
Brother Anthony Muhammad, followed by Diana Black. Ms. Black is, yeah.
I am that I am. A spiritual man. I call on the ancient ancestors, antiquity. I call on the Father, who represents the spirit in the soul. I call on the Mother of the universe, the daughter of the earth, who represents the feeling, and always know she got the cheering interest at hand. You don't have to worry, she got your interest. But we gotta go back to the ancient ways of our ancestors. We are the raw family members of the earth. Universe is a dark matter, and I represent that dark matter as many of you do. With that being said, you can learn how to be in my principles, be in balance with nature, be in balance with all creation, but if you don't want to, like I hear you today, you better recognize what the president talking about climate change. Something gonna change if you don't turn back to the ways of righteousness and justice. You hear people come here, ever since the eighties, I've been coming down here, talking to the people. Dr. Krim started something with the African infusion program to let us have access to teach more than what you want to do with your curriculum, leaving out all the history that my people contribute to and made the greatest contribution to civilization. You don't want to know that the top 10% that look like me, you go along with Andrew Jackson, who were responsible for the trails of tears, and also he was responsible for the Democratic Party. He was the first president of the Democratic Party in 1829. Why do I go like that? Because you can't do right if you don't want to hear that what is truth, if you don't want to research that what is good for the benefit of our children. The lower economic position of our people don't even have two dollars in the bank. Out of 50% of 100, you don't care. You look like them, won't even speak for them. I greet you as I come, my metro hotel. Assalamu alaikum.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diana Black for two minutes, followed by Ryan Valduga. Ryan Valduga, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated. Diana Black, you have two minutes. Ms. Black?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can now. You have two minutes.
Okay, great. So my name's Diana Black. I live in the part of Southern Morningside that's most recently been zoned back into Morningside Elementary on account of us being in the lock zone. So first of all, I can't thank you enough for listening to our feedback and making this change. In particular, I want to thank Michelle, Tamara, Travis, Dan, and Kavi, who are probably very tired of hearing from me, and my neighbors. That said, I still have concerns about the current proposal. I'm not going to weigh in on dual campus versus K-5, but I do want to urge the board to strongly prioritize keeping our schools as neighborhood schools. Currently, many of my Morningside neighbors are still being excluded from Morningside Elementary, and their spots are being taken by a neighborhood that's, one, farther away from MES, two, already requiring buses, and, three, has an equal commute to Inman as it does to MES. And as you can see in the latest survey, the Midtown Cluster is overwhelmingly in favor of keeping our schools as neighborhood schools. So as we look to the future, let's not unnecessarily tear apart the strong communities that we've relied so heavily on, especially in the last couple of years. Thank you.
Ryan Valduga for two minutes, followed by Raina Van Voorhees for two minutes. Raina, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
I do not think a new K-35 is the best option for our kids, and my reasons are not about money, as others have summarized. I have a second grader at Spark. He spent most of his kindergarten virtual. In first grade, he went through multiple changes back and forth between virtual and in-person. Now he's had a fairly regular first week of second grade. In this proposal, he then moves to a totally new school next year. That's a lot of change to ask one group of kids to endure, and now he's left out of grandfathering, which I don't understand at all. And it's not that I don't want to go to a new school. I have a daughter starting kindergarten next year who would be there. It's that I don't want my second grader and his peers to go through more change. They are already behind, we know this. They are still in APS COVID recovery. I wish the decision was based on what's best for them and not theoretically saving money on buses. Not to mention that COVID is ongoing and a new public health emergency was declared last week. If you do allow this plan to move forward, please work with us, the community at the new school, to give us the best chance possible for a good new school. Please give us a principle that we know and trust. We have great leadership at Spark, and the majority of Spark will move to a new school. Please give us some consistency and a principle who knows our kids, the best practices from Spark, and the lessons learned from starting a new Spark. Please give us a representation on a selection committee beyond our go-team who might not be moving to the new school. Please give us a secure building. Spark and New Morningside have security vestibules. Please don't ask us, in today's realities, to move our children to a building with less security. If the vestibule cannot be built, school should get a dedicated resource officer. And please let us in the building before it opens. The one room I've seen is the auditorium. There is mature graffiti on every seat that elementary school kids shouldn't see. Let us work with APS next summer to get the school ready to be a permanent home. Please give us specific ways APS will provide extra support to a new school. Katie Howard has mentioned additional budget allocation for a new school. Is this true? We hear vague talk of support, but we want to know specifics. I don't agree with this plan because I don't think it's the best for our student outcomes, but if it proceeds, please truly engage with us to make it the best new school possible.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Voorhees, followed by Kimberly Dukes. Ms. Dukes, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Hello. I am thoroughly disappointed that APS has continued to move forward with a plan to open a new K-5 at the detriment of the current Spark students. This plan is not in the best interests of our children at Spark, given the turmoil of the last three years of COVID-19, uncertainty in student enrollment, the uncertainty in staffing, and the monumental change in zoning and enrollment. I'm frustrated that the negative impact to my children at Spark has been repeatedly brushed aside. Change is hard. They will be fine. I am not sure that there is ever a good time to gut an excelling school, which is what this proposal does, but given the circumstances, I am sure that this is not the right time to do so. It is hard to imagine that this proposal, given the sheer number of negatively impacted students, faculty, and staff, large number of negative feedback from the community members, is still the plan. APS and the board has been bombarded with information from impacted community members, addressing our concern and repeatedly requesting that this plan be rejected and a new plan created. created. Looking at the surveys, reading the comments, listening to feedback from organizations, many parents are completely averse to the current plan. I hope the board listens to community and rejects this plan and requests that APS comes back with a plan that addresses capacity while also being mindful of the current climate our children are navigating with COVID-19 and learning loss. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Dukes, followed by Strada Strinen for two minutes. Ms. Dukes, you have two minutes.
Good evening, Dr. Herring and APS board members. I want to thank you all for passing the goals and guard rail policy. Our goal for this school year is to start strong and stay strong with the goals and guard rails to ensure all students, all APS students, have a chance at a world-class education. Second, APS social workers need help, okay? How do we equip APS social workers to be more of a resource versus investigators? I myself have experienced trials and tribulations trying to enroll my five-year-old daughter in APS school this year as a displaced family. We, as parents, should be able to share our backgrounds and our current situations with social workers without being judged or discriminated against due to race or class. Dr. Herring, we should never experience fear, intimidation, retaliation, or unwelcoming behavior. How do you think it make a parent like myself feel when a social worker tell me I can't be homeless forever, like that is my wish? That happened, true story. Instead of asking me, "How may I help?", or ask, "Ms. Dukes, what is your story?" My ask for the board is to create a support plan to support social workers so that they understand the families in Atlanta, so that they understand transi... and the mobility rate. If you don't understand families and the communities that you're working with, you'll never be able to help us. You also have to show up with compassion, empathy, and always looking to be a servant and to help. Board, my only question tonight is, how do the district find homelessness? Last, but definitely not least, my ask is that the board listen to all parents. You, we've been saying it for months, we've been saying it for a couple of years, I've been coming since 2016, and that's been the ask, for you guys to listen, because we are the experts when it comes to our children, and we are the experts in our community. My ask for the community is to join the task force to hold the board accountable to those goals and guard rails that they put in place.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Strada Strinen for two minutes, followed by Kristin Klebenoff for two minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Respected Board of Education members and Dr. Herring, I'd like to first say thank you for your time, energy, and the consideration you have given to all voices and feedback in the Midtown Cluster. Excuse me, sorry. I had some feedback. I am a current Morningside Elementary School parent of two, a Piedmont Heights resident and Civic Association Board member, and an architect who understands the work of the Seismar Group. I speak tonight as a community member. Piedmont Heights neighborhood would like to reiterate our complete support for the current APS proposal. We understand this has not been an easy process. We are grateful for the careful consideration given to the needs of the community at large to arrive at the correct long-term solution for all our Midtown Cluster students and their families. As I previously shared by petition, there's a great deal of support for this proposal in this community. It is a petition of signatures gathered from legitimate residents and is not artificially inflated. We collectively ask you to please vote to maintain proximal communities, to reduce traffic and morning commutes, for walkability, for strong and balanced student communities, for increasing ethnic and economic diversity. We ask you to please vote yes. One request I would like to make is with the community at large in mind, is please engage the parents and caregivers of affected elementary students on grandfathering. We do believe it is a key piece to making this proposal successful for all involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristin Klebenoff for two minutes, followed by Shandrea Gay. And Ms. Gay, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Kristin Klebenoff, and as a parent of a Spark third grader, I strongly urge the board to vote no to the APS proposal for Inman K5. I ask that you prioritize the academic stability and well-being of kids who've been through a lot during the pandemic. My expectation for the board is that you would have required the following core ingredients of a successful solution to be in place before consideration of a yes vote. First, capacity data that the community can trust, yet parents have shown in great detail that this data is flawed. Second, convincing support of the community, yet hundreds of community members are urging you to vote no, including the majority of the CINS survey participants this past week across school communities, plus over 90% of the Spark and Mary Lynn PTL members representing the schools most impacted by the proposed changes. Third, recent track record of standing up a new school and leadership in a pandemic. Emphasis on "in a pandemic." Yet our kids will eventually go to Howard Middle School, and we continue to hear about growing pains there. Respectfully, you have not earned our confidence in this regard. Fourth, incorporation of any feedback from the school community most disproportionately impacted. The edits never addressed any of the Spark comments shared. I don't feel like you've done the due diligence we've begged for over and over. I know it's been a long road and appreciate you just want it be done. However, it feels like a solution has been baked up with subpart ingredients, but not only that, it feels like the heat has been turned up to make it go faster, and in the process, the Virginia Highlands community is getting burned. If you stand behind a bad product, it will leave a bad taste in all of our mouths. Please, for our kids, vote no. Take the time to come up with a solution that provides our kids with stability. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shandrea Gay for two minutes.
Good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is Shandrea Gay. I have three children in APS. My children attend Mary Lynn Elementary. As a child, my mother worked for APS and fought for me. I still ended up in prison at the age of 17. After spending multiple years in prison, I finally decided to dedicate my children... dedicate my life to my children after giving birth to my son in prison. I never thought it would be so hard to get my children in a great school until last year at Mary Lynn Elementary. I was harassed and stereotyped. My son was denied the right to receive his IEP services, and I was not communicated with the outcome. Because of my past, I pay month-to-month and live in an Airbnb in locations that will prevent me from not going back to my old environments. That could influence me to make bad decisions. Some nights, my mom allows my kids to come over, but not me. I want to thank the board for guard rail number three, so that I'll never have to experience fear, intimidation, retaliation, or unwelcoming behavior ever again. I want to give a special thanks to Mr. Edwards and Student Placement for understanding everyone's situation is different and not discriminating with my kids against my past. I also would like to thank Atlanta Thrive for all the support that they have given me with giving my kids a school and helping them to learn. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this concludes public comment.
Thank you so much, community members, for taking the time to speak with us this evening. We always appreciate your feedback and your engagement with us. And so first, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, I want to give a hearty welcome back to our students for the new school year. Community members, you may have noted, if you've been watching our proceedings today, that we are doing things a little differently this year. A major portion of our daytime work session, and some of you guys talked about it in your comments, is each month we will be dedicated to a deep discussion about one or sometime more of our student outcome-focused goals and guard rails. You will hear a brief recap in just a few minutes from the superintendent about today's discussion. But because of this new student outcome-focused way of governing the district, some things are going to change. And so sometimes our traditional updates and presentations, and even from Dr. Herring and I, will play as a video content before our 6:00 PM meeting. These materials will be made available on our YouTube and on Assembly as well. And so if you need any help accessing those, please let us know so we can make sure you know how to access that material. Today, our traditional day-one presentation was presented as a video before we reconvened at 6:00. And if you were watching, we provided highlights from an incredibly successful Back to School Bash and our visits to 20 schools and our Transportation Department during the fir... during just the first week of school. The administration has been busy preparing for the new year, and so has the board, and so several of us have held virtual community meetings and attended events throughout our di... throughout our districts. And so this, even this past Saturday, board members, Kate... giving a shout out to Katie Howard, held District One Community Meeting and Back to School Bash. And we would like to thank Operation Peace for supporting our students in that event, along with Vice Chair Aretha Baldwin and a few of us through the... on the board that participated in back-to-school events as well. In conclusion, I will... I... in conclusion, I just want to say that we, as a board, recognize the all-in it... all-in effort it takes from communities, families, and APS staff to get the hundreds and thousands of moving pieces into place to launch a new school year. We thank you, and we look forward to a productive and successful year for APS. But I also have one final item to note this evening. We've kicked off something besides the new school year, as we are celebrating our 100... 150th anniversary of the founding of Atlanta Public Schools all year long. You'll be hearing much more during our meetings and via our social media channels. And as you know, we are on... we are on Instagram at APSBOE, or on Twitter at BOEAPS, and even on Facebook. So events and engagement opportunities are being planned, and details will be posted on our APS website, which is atlantapublicschools.us/150. We invite the entire community to celebrate and participate with us as we mark this historic milestone anniversary. That concludes my remarks, Dr. Herring, and we are ready to hear your updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to provide a brief recap of our work session reports from earlier today. We heard four presentations. For our first presentation, we heard a board member requested presentation on safety and security from Chief Ronald Appelin, Atlanta Public Schools Police Department Chief of Police. Chief Appelin provided an overview of the Office of Safety and Security, its role in keeping students and staff safe, and plans for the 2022-23 school year around staffing and continued and new proposed initiatives. Takeaways included a better understanding about our readiness to provide an even safer and more secure teaching and learning environment for APS. For our second presentation, we heard the facilities master planning update. Travis Norvell, our Chief Strategy and Engagement Officer, shared an overview of the recommendation to create a new K5 elementary school at the Inman Building and modify school attendance zone boundaries for Mary Lynn, Morningside, Springdale Park, as well as minor changes to the attendance zone boundaries of Garden Hills, Howard, Sutton, Midtown, and North Atlanta. He also shared the update and the recommendation to provide grandfathering or pre-approved transfer transfers to rising fourth and fifth graders. The board will be voting on the action this evening. For our third presentation, Lisa Bracken, Chief Financial Officer, presented three agenda items, including a small budget adjustment for the state CTAE grant, a report out of the final quarter of fiscal year 2022 student activity accounts, and an overview of the millage recommendation for fiscal year 2023. Today, the board held two of the three required public hearings to set the APS millage. Our recommendation is a partial rollback of the millage from 20.740 to 20.5 mills. This partial rollback will allow the district to maintain the fiscal year 2023 budget as previously adopted while offering some relief to taxpayers. The third and final hearing is scheduled for Monday, August 15th, at 10:00 AM, after which the board will take act... action to adopt the millage rate. For our fourth presentation, the board and I engaged in the district's first board goal monitoring report for Goal One, which is the percentage of students in grades three through eight scoring proficient or above in reading, as measured by the Georgia Milestones, will increase from 36.9% in August 2019 to 47% in August 2026. This work is part of the district's student outcomes-focused governance, which you will hear us refer to as SOFG at times for short. This initiative is part of our partnership with the Council of Great City Schools. The board goal monitoring report allowed the board and I to engage in meaningful dialogue on the district's progress toward achieving our five-year literacy goal. The following steps we are taking toward that measured... toward that measure, measured progress include continued implementation of the district's learning recovery and continuous improvement efforts, such as HMH interventions, foundations, Orton-Gillingham, Amplify, and APS Five Strategies. I want to thank our work session presenters for their thorough updates, and now I just want to spend a few moments this evening echoing your sentiments, Board Chairwoman Collins, about our very great first week of school. As you noted, we are providing the community with some of our report outs in a slightly different way to make time for the mission-critical work of our goal monitoring. Tonight, we showed our day-one presentation, announced our new school principles, and showed video highlights from Back to School Bash, our week-one school visits, and also our ribbon-cutting celebration with teachers of the newly refurbished Instructional Services Center. In addition, we showed our trailer... our trailer video for the APS 150th anniversary celebration. If for any reason you didn't get a chance to see this content, please search for APS TV on YouTube, as APS TV on YouTube, and visit the Assembly Tool on the Board of Education's website, or you can watch the replay of the beginning of tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone, and this concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Herring. Would you please present tonight's consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am pleased to submit consent agenda items five... numbers 5.1A through 5.4F. Board members, I would like to call your attention to the following. Consent finance item 5.3(c), authorizing the district to contract with communities and schools of Atlanta to provide wraparound supports to students at nine schools across the district. Douglas High School, John Lewis Invictus Academy, Crawford Long Middle School, Maynard Jackson High School, Mays High School, North Atlanta High School, the Phoenix Academy, Scott Elementary School, and South Atlanta High School. Students will receive support for academic remediation, enrichment, academic support, and emergency assistance. With that, I present consent agenda items 5.1A through 5.4F to the board for approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda items 5.1A through 5.4F?
So moved.
Second. It's properly moved by Jennifer McDonald, second by Aretha Baldwin. Making sure everyone is online to vote. One second.
Ishay, I beg your pardon, but I've been locked out. From me trying to log in, so can I just verbally?
Absolutely, yes.
Sandra, I apologize. I'm a... I'm a yes on that bit.
Thank you.
Pierre, is Cynthia or Erica joining us?
I am here. And I vote yes.
Okay, thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I will now open it up for discussion on Agenda Item. I will now open it up for, I will, I will now open up for discussion on Agenda Item 6.1, the Monthly Budget Adjustment. Are there any discussions or questions about Item 6.1, the Monthly Budget Adjustment? Is there a motion to approve Item 6.1, the Monthly Budget Adjustment?
So moved.
Great. It's been properly moved by Jason Estivez, second by Jennifer McDonald. May we please open, oh, I'm sorry, Michelle, sorry, got you guys confused. Thank you for correcting me, Jen. Um, second by Michelle Olympiades. May we now open it for a vote?
Please record me as a yes.
Thank you so much, Cynthia.
Uh, Sandra, please put me down as a yes as well.
Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, my, mine's do not open. Okay, there you go. You should see it up now.
He didn't record you, Tamara. Says it's been recorded, but it's not up there.
It says record, Sandra, it's saying recording? Now it's grayed out.
It says, it says your vote, your vote has been recorded, but.
Yeah, for this one, since it's just the monthly budget adjustment, Jen, Jen and Tamara, you find with the voice, uh, verbal vote. Okay, great. Yes for McDonald and yes for Jones. Thank you so much. Michelle. Thank you. I will now open it up for discussion on Agenda Item 6.2, the Facilities Master Planning Phase One Recommendation. Michelle, any other questions, comments, or discussion? Michelle?
Um, thank you. Thank you, Ishay. Well, Dr. Herring, we've been talking for months, and, um, I appreciate you, uh, being patient with me and understanding kind of the road that, um, the Midtown Cluster has been on for some time and, and our concern as a community that we've had a lot of time to try to figure out what our plan should have been. And I think you've heard this evening that there's people who are pro the plan and people who are against the plan that's being proposed for the K-5. I have no doubt that the Midtown community will rally and support as a whole community. It's going to take us a little bit of time to get back together. Right now, we have neighborhood against neighborhood, neighbor against neighbor. And it's been an incredibly, um, stressful, uh, several months. Um, I will say that I have done as best I can to share with you um, all the feedback that I have gotten. Um, I thank the Board Office for helping me because I was overwhelmed with emails and let's talk that I couldn't even manage at all. So I really appreciate, um, Pierre and Keith stepping up and helping me kind of get some of that managed that I could respond to folks, which is very important to me. I've done my best to engage with my community to understand, uh, everything that is going on. I see this happening very soon, uh, in the other part of the district that I, um, that I share with Katie with respect to what will be happening in Jackson, as well as what will be happening on the west side of town uh, with my colleague Aretha as we try to figure out how we're going to start managing the expansion that we're feeling. I really do hope that there's a lot of takeaways that the administration, um, has noted so that the process moving forward is more collaborative, uh, and where the community really feels engaged, because that's where, um, yeah, I tell you this all the time, that's where I take the hits. You know, it's like, well, they didn't do this, and they didn't, and so I try to share all that information with you, but that's not, well, that's not who we want to be, and that's not who we are. Uh, we want to be better. I, like I said, I, if the administration had gone with the dual campus, if the administration had gone as is proposing right now with the K-5, I would even be tempted to say if the administration had moved forward with the 4-5, the community would rally around what the solution is, and we would get it done and make it work. However, the process has just been too much. And I think you've really heard that from people who are pro the plan and people who are not in favor of the K-5 plan. So I do hope that we can rally. I really do feel for Virginia Highland, um, the community is literally, the neighborhood's literally being divided, um, which is something new that we've experienced, uh, at least in the Midtown Cluster. Um, I know Katie and I have talked about what potentially could be happening, um, in Jackson, given their growth and, um, their opportunities. Um, but this is, it, it, this is a first where we see, you know, a neighborhood being split, and it, it does have significant impacts. And like I said, it's, um, it's just been a really very, very difficult time.
I do want to respond to, so a Board Member Olympiades. And to all, I, I think you have, um, captured very accurately not just our conversations relative to, uh, this season of engagement, uh, but, um, I also honor that you've captured what you've heard from constituents. Um, I also acknowledge that this has not been an easy process, primarily because of the fact that we've introduced all things as a result of having gone through the last two years of change that no one would have desired. What I can say and will say relative to, um, this level of engagement, there are always, and there forever will be opportunities for improvement. We own and will take heed to that. But it is the desire of our administration to bring forth recommendations that are focused around children and that is in the best interest of our children as they are part of our APS family. I've said it before, and, and several of our community engagements, there were several iterations of opportunities, and we've received different positions on feedback. I don't know that we would have had a universal support on any one decision. But this is what I also know about our district and our community. We stand, I maintain, a position of bringing forth this recommendation of a K-5, knowing that it is also our responsibility to ensure that no child or no family experiences loss in quality education, that we will engage deeply if approved to make certain that our family members play a part in the establishment of the school and the school community, and that there is no lack in quality education and culture within the school. I also want to acknowledge and appreciate the work of our Sizmore Consultants, the engagement of our divisions, our Engagement Office, our Equity Office, our Academic Office, Operations. And I also receive the feedback in all of the areas in which it comes. Some positive and some, of course, that challenge us to rethink and revisit what we bring forward to our APS community. All I can say is that we remain committed to excellence. And as our Board moves to make a decision, wherever we land, how we land, we will give professional, committed, and dedicated expertise to ensuring that our schools will be successful. Most importantly, as we continue to engage, we will take back the feedback that we receive to continue to shape quality engagement for all of APS. I understand that, again, that this is not an easy discussion or decision, but it is one that we believe is the right one. And as Superintendent, I will maintain that position. Thank you.
Tamara, then Jason?
Thank you, Michelle, um, for highlighting all of those things. Um, you know, we've all received, and I've received, a lot of feedback on this issue, and, and I have read everything, even if I have not responded. Um, if you have sent me a let's talk in the last few months, just know that I've been locked out of my let's talk account for a couple of months. And Keith, I mean, Keith and Pierre have been gracious to respond to you guys. I can read it, but I can't respond to it unless you put your email address and your phone number in the message. Um, hopefully, we're on track to get that fixed. I think something similar was happening to Katie. Um, I agree with Michelle's concern about process. Um, it, I, and she's right that this has been going on for a long time. I mean, it's not, it's not just what we've experienced over the last, you know, eight months to a year, but it's been going on for a long time. We had gotten to the point where, you know, I thought that people within the Midtown Cluster community were having, you know, good conversations. But the parents are right. I mean, the engagement in the last year, it hasn't been constructive. Um, um, and it's created a lot of division. I mean, I've watched the Midtown community sense of cluster community um, and previous willingness to engage with each other, you know, dissolve. And I think that, you know, one of the things, it, it was, it was, um, you know, just sad for me to see because we had worked so hard, you know, after the la, after 10 years ago when we had, you know, so much division to rebuild that kind of, um, collaboration. And the COVID has really proven to me that if you don't constantly nurture that and, you know, be intentional about, you know, getting together and just doing business on a regular basis and having conversations, that it will quickly go away. The experience does, it has elevated, and I appreciate the PTOs and the PTAs for, you know, outlining their concerns, um, appreciate Sins for its, um, you know, engagement in this. There is some very common concerns, um, that have been raised. One of them is the engagement. We have a lot of work to do as a Board and as a, um, administration, you know, around how we, you know, do that. Um, the issue of school funding has come up. Um, parents of children whose schools are going to be getting smaller, and parents of schools that are getting created, and parents of children in schools that are under-enrolled or are very small, they're all afraid. Uh, and we've talked about this, we, they're all afraid that their kids are not going to get the academic resources and the whole child support that they need. We need to make sure that children in all schools have the academic programming services and resources, the school climate and the whole child support that they need, and that they don't have to be overcrowded or very large to get it. So there are two sides to this coin, you know, schools that are afraid of closing and schools that are afraid of moving to alleviate overcrowding. And every year, 10 years, we toss this coin. But we really need to address the, the issue, and I've talked to all my colleagues, um, about this, and I hope to get their support, um, to continue to update, you know, how we fund schools so that students and parents, um, and the whole school is supportive. Um, and we, we need to make sure they're fully resourced before we fund other things. And so, Madam Budget Chair, uh, Board Member Olympiades, I'm hoping that you can help us work on that. And if we can get there, um, you know, I think we will go a long way towards avoiding this kind of pain, um, not just here, but, you know, in other parts of the district, you know. And avoids, you know, because, like Michelle was saying, we've got a lot of this coming up, you know, all over, all over the city. Um, and the other issue, you know, that brings up the whole issue of the Facilities Master Plan, because all around the city, there's uncertainty and anxiety, you know, in different communities, those that are under-enrolled, you know, and, and worry, you know, and those that are over-enrolled and worried because, you know, we're, we're getting ready to tackle high school capacities. So, um, you know, I'm praying that my colleagues will work, you know, on solving what are the underlying issues that are causing everybody a lot of distress, um, so that we can unify and get together and move forward and have dialogues. Thank you. Um, do I think that, you know, a 4-5, I mean, a 4-5, a K-5, you know, will, can work? I think it can work. Um, you know, any other iteration, you know, can work. Um, if you get this, you know, the great parents and communities all over the city, you know, engaged and involved and behind it. So I'm hoping that my colleagues will chime in and support that, you know, we do have work to do there and, and support me in that. Thank you.
I won't, uh, repeat, uh, a lot of what my colleague Tamara said, uh, but I do want to reiterate, um, the budget piece. There was a question she asked earlier today during a work session about, um, standards of service and making sure that we're thinking about that uh, as we continue with the SSF formula, which I think, eh, SSF has, has been amazing. Uh, but there are, um, there are, uh, effects of that formula that we have to make sure, uh, we address to, to, to make sure that, um, no student is, is negatively impacted by the work that we're trying to do to make sure that all kids have what they need to thrive. Um, and that means doing that work now, um, because it's, it's not just going to come, it's, it's not going to rise as an issue with this, it has not. It's been an issue in the past, but it's going to continue to be an issue, uh, whether it's the Jackson Cluster, whether it's the, um, Douglas Cluster, whether it's the North Atlanta Cluster, there, there are clusters all over the city that, that have schools that are redistrict that are not, that are going to be impacted by, um, by not having that standard of service funding uh, that I think will, will be necessary for, for the district to establish moving forward. And then, um, I want to make sure that the administration and, and the Board, takes heart to, oh, the public comment and, um, and that there were some notes being taken and, um, there's a lot of feedback, and there are some concrete next steps that, uh, I implore the administration to take, uh, from several of the commenters. Uh, so I appreciate the community for providing that feedback, both through email, uh, online, and in person.
Just want to echo what my colleagues have said and appreciate all the feedback I've received from the communities impacted, and I'm looking forward to the next, um, phase of FMP. And really appreciate that we're going through this process, this planning process. Um, also appreciate the timeline that was presented earlier, um, for the next phase of the process and looking holistically at our, at our entire system. Um, and planning around capacity, and I appreciate my colleagues bringing up the very important points around the imbalance we have with, you know, capacity at all, many of our schools in the system and just planning for tomorrow and the future. So I want to thank, again, the, um, team that's worked really hard, um, on this recommendation, and, um, appreciate all the feedback again, and looking forward to the next phase um, in this process as well, and the support we know will be there for what the decision is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, uh, questions, or feedback? Thank you so much for, thank you so much, Tamara and Jason, in regards to the budgeting piece. Um, because I do think that's part of the conversation that is often when these decisions are made, we, we think about it, we know about it, but really diving in deeper into the reformation that we want to see. I think it's really key to bring that, uh, and I know these decisions are, are extremely hard when you are looking at opening, closing, moving stu, you know, moving students to address over capac, capacity, you know, capacity or undercapacity. One thing I struggle with is the engagement piece, where I'm always, I'm an advocate for more engagement can happen. But in this instant sitting here, even as we embarked on this conversation last year, it started with the 4-5 engagement happened, okay? And I actually met with communities about that. Then there was a proposal. Then there was a proposal of a K5. We had engage, you know, there was engagement. Then it was a surface of Springdale Park Community. There was engagement. This decision was to, was slated to, we were slated to make this decision in, in April and engaged on more engagement. And then it was the Maryland and Morennes side. And so I think we all know that these commu, these decisions are hard. And they're, if it could be a universal, you know, if it could be a utopia decision, I, um, or everyone could be excited and pleased, that is always our goal. And so I don't want any part of those, any part of the community to walk away as if we have been absent or dead, or, or dead ear to anyone's concern or feedback. Because this has been a decision for us before COVID, I would say five years in. And when I look at even slide four, to know even the proposal bringing on a K5 next year and those schools are still the lowest, we will be at another conversation about this. And so as I think about the holistic strategy that needs to happen from budgeting and redistricting, a holistic effort, I just, I struggle with just looking at this and knowing that we, you know, every community, if, if we continue to push it down the road, it's going to, other, other things are going to bubble and we're going to keep going through a cyclic process of a ju, of, of trying to address the issue where we have a solution and the greatest impact is going to happen is on our kids. And so I just want to lean with that, I just want to leave with that for the community to understand that we have, even, even those of us that will be impacted from this decision as a full district, but don't live in that community. I have met with the, with individuals in that community, answered emails, phone calls. So we are all in when it comes to this. But I will, but I, I won't be, well, yeah, so I'll leave it there. And so just wanted to see, um, just wanted to go ahead and move forward with, is there a motion to approve item six point one, the facilities master plan phase one recommendation for final approval? Six point, oh, my apologies, six point two, phase, phase one, uh, master, facilities master plan and phase one recommendation for final approval. So moved. It's been properly moved by Vice Chair Aretha Baldwin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Cynthia. Um, a second by Cynthia Briscoe Brown. May we please open it for a vote?
Uh, Sandra, please put me down as a no. This is Michelle.
Madam Chair, there is not. Sorry about that. I'm so used to it. Double check, double. Okay, well, at this time, I would like to invite board members to report out from their committees or, or recent activities. I know over the summer, a few of us have engaged in various conferences and summer institutes and wanted to take just a quick, brief moment to discuss those experiences. Yes, Aretha?
So I'll speak up for Katie and I. Both of us are participating in the School Board Partners. And we went to a convening in Denver. The whole point of School Board Partners is to give you the support, knowledge and guidance to be a more effective, um, school board member. And so we did that and both learned a good amount of stuff that we're bringing back. And then we also did attend the GSBA conference in June. And that was also, um, very knowledgeable. I was able to pick up some training hours um, on governance and governance structure. So appreciate that.
Great, thank you. And also in July, um, the entire, um, the district was invited to be, this is our first year being invited to be a part of Harvard's Public Education Leadership Project Summer Institute. And so there were six of us, Dr. Herring, I, Aretha Baldwin, Dr. Selena Florence, um, Travis Norvell and, um, Dr. Tahida Baker Jones and Lisa, oh, yes, and, and soon to be, I'm Dr. Lisa Bracken that joined us, uh, that came together for a week at Harvard Business School and engaged on, um, problems of practice and moving the district forward. And so their, uh, our problem of practice focused on equity and more importantly, aligning with our goals and guardrails, what I'm really excited about. The great thing about this is the three-year commitment and we'll be sending a leadership team every year. So it would change. And so really excited to see next year's cohort as we continue to dive into our initial problem of practice that we set, um, in moving the district, uh, forward. The interesting thing about it, I think Aretha and I was maybe the only, well, it was a couple of other board members that was there from 12 school systems, 12 districts. So it was really good to hear what other districts were doing around the country. And also, you know, it was really great to be a part of the conversation. And so want to be, uh, there. Erica Mitchell and I, we also had the opportunity along with Dr. Herring to, to attend the California Association of Black School Educators, their Black Male Achievement Conference, um, hashtag Black Boy Joy. And the biggest thing about it, I don't know if people understand, the state of California, Governor Newsom actually passed as a state guidance, a Black Male Achievement Plan for the entire state of California. And so it was really good to understand what school syst, uh, what districts and, uh, in the state is doing in regards to, um, Black Male Achievement. And a lot of those organizations are doing work in the, in the southeast and particularly in Georgia and Atlanta. So great opportunity to learn more about what, what lays on the horizon for us to explore as we even address Black Male Achievement in, in our district. As one of the first steps was our goal, our goal progress monitoring conversation today. So really excited to be a part of that. Yes, and we also got an award for the most, uh, most innovative school district. And so it was really part of, it was really, um, excited to be a part of conversation to share our trajectory and journey of where we, where we were, where we are and what the future lies ahead of us for Atlanta Public Schools. So very honored to receive that recognition as well. Any other report outs from my colleagues or other conferences or committees? All right. I try to go on myself to make sure we get out here no less than eight, eight, look, 8:00 PM. Um, and so with that, I will now entertain a motion, yes. Oh, Cynthia, Cynthia. Sorry, my phone died. Okay.
Okay, can you hear me? Can somebody acknowledge that you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to bring an update from the Policy Review Committee. We will be having a meeting on August the 18th. I want to particularly thank those community members who have sent us, um, inquiries and concerns relating to the dress code policy. And I want to particularly thank those community members who have sent, uh, proactive and productive suggestions uh, from other districts and even in a couple of cases, language that we might consider. Uh, the agenda for the October, for the August Policy Review Committee meeting has not been set. So I can't tell you that that policy will be on the agenda for that meeting. But please be assured that we are, we have received your suggestions and your concerns. Uh, we're digesting the information that you've sent us and will be looking at whether we need to make, discuss and make further revisions to that policy. I think that one is, is top of mind for many of our community right now. And I just wanted to, to bring that as well. But we will be having a meeting on August the 18th, which is our committee day. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that, uh, announcement, Cynthia. Really appreciate it. And one last announcement, just, um, one, a point, another appointment that we made. Stephanie Flowers was appointed to our Beltline Affordable Housing Advisory Board. And so I also want to acknowledge that as she, as she has begun her service already, but wanted to make that announcement at tonight's board meeting. So congratulations to Stephanie. Few of us know her extremely well and I know she, she will serve us well on that board. Now, with that being said, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Jennifer McDonald, all right? Yes, and second by Aretha Baldwin. All in, I know, Jennifer Olympiades, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion that carries, a motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a great night. See you guys next month.